Supervisor Forrest.
Here.
Supervisor Hunter.
Here.
Supervisor Whitaker.
Here.
Supervisor Conant.
Here.
Thank you, and if we could all stand forward to the pledge of allegiance. Chief Shallowitz will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. We have Supervisor Conant, lead us into your location.
May we assume a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for the people we have before us today and to make comments to the public about how the county you run. Please let the Board of Supervisors have the input from the public and the community to give us the wisdom we need to make the right decisions for Southern County. In Jesus' name we pray, we find someone who is better than that.
Amen. Thank you Supervisor. Okay, the first thing on the agenda we have is a public comment. We're going to open it up by way to any comments from the public to start with. Yes, Bill?
Just a couple.
You can say your name so they can...
Phil Beeler, Uwe City, Florida Springs, Uwe County, Southern County.
We know who you are, just want to make sure.
Yeah, I looked an hour and a half ago in the Board of Supervisors' calendar, I didn't see this post name where in the paper it says 10-6-8. There's a there. Kind young lady told me exactly where was that at the hall. So, you know, we need to get these things out in public and open and maybe a little bit of need time. And other than my gripe, I'd like to commend the Board of Supervisors for sending a letter to that there, Sarah, in regards to missing no report to the court on grand jury. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Anyone else with comments? Okay, if there are no further public comments, we'll start with introductory, introductory comments. And that's Mr. Binning. And Mr. Snidler, let me have a quicker.
Okay. Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So we're at the time of year where we do the annual goals and priorities and other policy documents. Normally we would do this in the spring, if it were many, right before we get into the Pledge of Allegiance, but various calendar challenges and such came about, so it got postponed, and here we are today. The pledge has been approved, or I've been recommending this, and we're beginning to do this for a year. But before I do that, I would like to thank our host, Jessica Hope for right here, right there. Thank Jessica and Museum for the use of this wonderful facility. You know, a lot to be proud of here, and everybody came in and parked over here, walked this way, saw the new community garden that our board approved that's been in the works now. I think we want to use that as an example as to how your staff approaches its work and tries to be sensitive to impacts on residents and so on. So initially, the community garden was proposed again on the west side of the building. Some of the neighbors became concerned, but rather than give up and quit, Jessica and her team did some problem solving and ended up moving it over to the east side of the building, and I think that's working well with the neighbors. So it's a really nice, huge, community asset. So we have a lot to celebrate here in the county, might as well focus on something here at this facility, so if you want to thank our hosts. Okay, so by way of agenda, we're going to work. It could be new for a while, or we might go fairly quickly, it's really up to the board, but we have a format, and we'll walk you through that format. We're going to start out with introductory comments on this one, and then we will have some updates for the board. We have more subject areas. One will involve an update on what's going on with the organization. I will do that, that'll be relatively short. And then our fire chief and our emergency services manager, Brenna Howell, she will provide, the two of them will provide an update on the Sutter Peace Fire that happened last week. Happened within 24 hours. Everybody involved did an outstanding job, and then there was no loss of property or life or anything like that. So they'll give an update on that. Scott Vernon will give an update on the homeless situation that is coming in front of the board in September, September 11th, but we thought it would be a good opportunity today to bring you up to speed on where we are on the back issue. In the end of that, Neil Hay, our involved services director, will provide an update on our public facilities. We do have a public facilities master plan concept coming in front of the board later again. These are sample and topical issues that the county is wrestling with, so we hopefully focus on those. From that, we'll go to item three, which is a proposed countywide mission statement. The county does not have a mission statement, so based on input we've received from the board and others, we've come up with a simple one to start with, and see what you want to do with that. The next is a customer service philosophy, it's another statement, and this is for the frontline employees, some guidelines for those folks. And then, from there, we'll go to the countywide goals. There's ten broad goals, and they have served the organization well, as were approved by the board last year, and we'll talk a little bit about those. But the meat of what you will spend time on will be your top priorities. Currently, there are ten, and four are two prerogatives, you change that number if you would like for this year that we're in. After that, we'll spend some time talking about the board norms, and Mr. Lopez will lead that discussion. And it'll be up to your board chair, if you reach a point you think we should take a break, happy to do so. We do have one, you have twelve, because it's in theater. So whenever, Mr. Chair, you feel like you should make a pause, we can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? So why don't we move into the next one? If you'd like to figure it out.
Mr. Darrow?
I'm scared I don't remember, but... We have Ken, can help?
I guess I don't want to hear that. Next. All right, we should test this. I'm sorry, your presentation. This is slideshadow. I don't... Do I have a hand or the...
Well, we'll wait a little bit here. So, let's talk a little bit about the structure of the organization. So, we're supposed to be the workshop. So the board supervisors, you would function like board directors of corporations, you're the governing body for the organization. In addition to that, we have six elected officials, elected department heads, and then we have fourteen, fifteen department heads that are appointed. And we have a nice organization charting to be up there, and what's telling about that is that there's twenty-one units, departments, programs, there's twenty-one units that the board provides oversight. We have five supervisors, five in the districts, with District Two, Camp Forest, Chair Vice Chair, Snack Conant, five, and Mr. Hunter Solinger, who will run out the other three districts. Okay, with respect to organizational issues, last year I stood up in front of you as a relatively new county administrator, and I was sharing that during a rebuilding transitional period. We're still in that period, and we'll be in that period for another year or so. And then, as we move into this year, 2021, we will be wrestling with a number of budget issues, and I don't want to sugarcoat those or downplay those, but we do know that those are out there, and your employees are ready to deal with that, and we will come up with some recommendations as we move forward. But having said that, from a leadership perspective, this board is a very good governing board in that you're stable, you're focused, you are forward-thinking, get along very well together as your staff, there's not much uncertainty with respect to what's important to you. The fact that you're doing goal-setting like this, that's a good positive sign. So there is leadership, there is vision, and there's a continuity of governance, and that's a good thing. Just want to point that out. Yes, there are a lot of challenges out there, organizations have had quite a bit of drama over the last couple of years. We still have drama in front of us, but I'm proud to share that we are working our way through it. We're not running from the challenges, we're acknowledging them, and we're dealing with them head-on. And again, that is part of the purpose of doing what we're doing today. One of the things I share with the executive team and the staff in our office is it's important to look toward the future with optimism and embrace it. And we have huge challenges, but let's acknowledge it's there, we have smart people here, we'll figure it out. And the organization has over a thousand employees, that's a lot of employees. They have departments that are as small as the museum, one and a half or two employees, all the way up to Health and Human Services, we're well over four hundred. So we have some vast array of sites. There's any way to go that...
Can you speak up a little?
Yeah, sorry. We didn't climb up, well, did we? One of the, again, we are trying hard to move from blame fixing and focus on problem solving, so when the board is dealing with a difficult issue, we're doing our level best to come up with solutions rather than to focus on the past and blame others. But it's taken this organization a while to make the shift, and we're still doing it. There's been a lot of successes, and I just wanted to provide a few examples, and not necessarily big ticket items, but I asked the department heads to provide some samples of things that they're proud of. Wanted to share with you a few things. The community garden, that's a good example. The night at the museum, this program, that's going very well, I think you've been doing that since January. It's a big hit with parents, right? It's a small thing, but it was Jessica's way of saying, hey, what can we do here that's positive for the community? Doesn't cost a lot of money, and that's a good example of some successes we have. In Health and Human Services, they moved to make all the county facilities, whether we own them or lease them, smoke-free, and that's a good thing. And they expanded the nurse home visiting program, now we're newborns, three-year-old plus, right? So a small thing, but really different quality life for residents. We're very proud of the Whiteout Co-location Program, we have a behavioral health providing the healthcare, or excuse me, the mental health professionals to deal with crisis as they come into the emergency room. We receive national and statewide recognition for that program. Nancy, I think with your staff, came up with this, they were looking at problem-solving at a local level, and I don't think we realized we were doing something that was quite innovative and unusual throughout the country. And we have healthcare professionals from all over the country, maybe even other countries, knocking on the door asking, how did you do it? And when you looked at it, it seems very simple, right?
It seems very simple, but you're colliding two organizations with their own cultures and policies and procedures and requirements, so that actually was the more difficult.
Okay, and I'm just trying to delineate for the board, these are some innovative things that your staff are doing right now despite all the challenges that we face. The 850 Gray Avenue lease, and a lot of credit goes to those who worked on that, we have that lease, looking at the possibility of acquiring it, if that's possible, that's going to apply to the community with a one-stop shop for pretty much most of your Health and Human Services over the long haul. So that was a big achievement. Related to that 680 Walton Avenue lease that was arranged there and the tenant improvements that are done, and we have our public assistance call center there and some other back office uses there, about sixty-five, seventy employees are there. They're working in conditions they only dreamed of out. And given our leadership, we were able to deliver to those employees very good use of taxpayer funds, interim use for a few years until, until 850 Graves done. The library literacy program, the multicultural dance program at River Valley High School is so successful, it's going to have to move over to the Paragons. That's a small, another small example of sort of thinking outside the box to achieve certain objectives. The libraries, libraries done a lot of great things, Jane's director, recently the library hosted a nationally recognized poet, Marcelo Hernandez, it's still out there. Right? That's an example of the type of quality program that Jane's bringing to the community. Also, he did succeed, Jane succeeded with the Library of Library, getting those tenant improvements done, having that up and running. And there's a whole base of others, I'll stop there. Just wanted you to know, good things are happening in your organization, and these are small successes. Challenges, you've heard me saying over and over, we have financial challenges, we have budget challenges, we have a, we do not have a structurally balanced general budget, we have to fix that, we're working on it. We will move forward, as we hear a little bit, with a financial strategic plan to identify what our challenges are. But living off of fund balance and salary savings and treating that as a revenue is not a good practice, and that number is only increasing. So we're not going to say the sky's falling and the world's ending, but we will tell you it's not a sustainable practice, and part of the challenge is acknowledging that, that's a challenge, and then we'll work on long-term solutions for that. We do have an extremely low and limited revenue base, as you've heard me say, taxes here, even though everybody thinks taxes are high, or are high, but here in Southern County, this is as low as it gets in California. That creates challenges with services we're trying to provide, and we have to just acknowledge that's our reality. We have some pension obligations, which is common throughout California, we've identified that for the board, our Honor of the Controller and Assistant County Administrator have done exemplary work in acknowledging that. The pre-funding each year came from the Honor of the Controller and our Treasurer, that was a great suggestion, and that is saving the organization in tax derision, amount of money, and we'll keep doing that. Our OPEB obligations as well are out there, we acknowledge that. We're not running from those obligations, but we have to come up with a plan as the costs go up, a million dollars plus each year, we have to figure out how to fund that. We are also moving to have a CAFRA, comprehensive annual financial report, we don't have that, we're getting close to having that, and we're working hard to get our budget and our financial reports to a caliber and quality that will be eligible for GFOA and CSAN recognition kind of words. We need that, so when we go to do bond issues, like for example, for 850 Gray, we'll get a better bond rate, which means a lower debt service payment. So organizationally, a lot of good success in terms of working together as a team. We have a ways to go, but your executive team, your department heads are working together, we're improving with each month, we've got some challenges, but we are working our way through that. And I have shared with board members on our regular meetings, the successes that we've had, so I won't necessarily repeat them here, but we know that we're moving from an organization that was very insular and had a lot of silos, and we're trying to be more team-oriented. And when we move away from having thirty facilities, we can go into campus settings, that will force people to be together and work closer and will interact better, but we are working on it. So a lot of good opportunities. We have more about that, everyone can repeat it. We are taking a good look at our staffing levels, I've shared this with you before, when vacancies come up, we take a good look at the positions, do we really need them, can they be restructured, are there different ways of doing things? I'm really excited and happy to share with you that as there are openings with different agencies around us, we're talking to each other. Mr. Bindorf, the CIO of Uwe County, when there are openings over there, he calls me, and we talk about can we share, can we share services? There are a few right now, I don't want to put it out here now, because I don't want people to misinterpret it, but where there's some common vacancies right now, we're looking at can we join those two together and have one department head rather than two? I recently received a call from the old county CIO, they have an opening, and he's wondering if we could share and maybe share with three or four counties. So we're trying to be more innovative and cost-effective. And in some cases, it does make sense to do it, but you made a reference to the co-location program we were right up, that's our behavioral health department operation, and that is Uwe County and Southern County together. The juvenile hall is three counties, so we'll continue to look at doing more and more of that. If we were five companies, we'd be doing that. Uwe City and Lygo and Southern County, we'd probably merge, if we were five companies, because it'd be way more cost-effective, it wouldn't be a duplication of effort, save a lot of money, deliver services in a more efficient model. But it's very hard for the government to do that. But your county does do that currently with other counties, and we're going to keep exploring that. We have a lot of cooperation. A large percentage of our workforce, as you know, is retiring, making, not retiring, but moving on to another opportunity, but her department over the last year has hit very hard with retirements, is the same, had one-third.
Yes.
So one-third of her department, she walks, and it's very hard to recruit here in the Uwe-Sutter area, it's not all for many. So when we lose individuals, it's very challenging to manage. So we have an older workforce, a large percentage of our employees are over forty-five, fifty, I have some data here, but I won't go over that, but a lot of people are gearing up for retirements, and we know that the next three to five years, more and more. So trying, doing succession planning is a big challenge for us. So, our office, the CIO's office, has been rebuilt, restaffed, we're fully staffed, I would say that, and we, I'm proud of the individuals in the office. Human Resources is going through a change now, the HR director left in May, we're getting close to filling that position probably within the next week or so, so we hope to get a real good leader there who can go on the work that Regina did before, that department's going in a good direction. Child support services, general services, we have interns in, those roles, or general services will have to be in, we'll have to work on filling those. We're taking a look at the overall organizational structure, and we talked about that before, we'll spend more time doing that over the next year, and we'll look at possible changes, but none are on the horizon right now. And I would like to end on the organizational stuff by simply saying, it's easy to be in this type of job and say everything's horrible, but I'm going to tell you the glass is half full, and we have a much brighter and better future down the road if we want, and the board stays focused, and we faithfully implement your direction, and we stay together as an executive team and employees, we can help to get there. I really believe that, I've worked with Lon Moop heads for over fifteen years, and he's helped the different organizations deliver on those type of commitments, and we can do it here. I'm very proud of the employees of this organization, we have good unions, good department heads, we can get there. I really believe that. So, having said all that, I don't have a clipper that works.
But Justin's here.
We'll go to the, I'm going to go to the next presentation, and while we do that, you can figure out some technical challenges. So, item number two on your subject updates, Southern Buttes Fire Briefing and Emergency Management Update, so I'm going to turn that over to John Shallowitz, our fire chief. So while they're setting that up, I'll point out one of our unofficial goals for the next few months, is to get the right word. We will get the right word. Right, Ken?
Okay, so while we're making some adjustments, we can go ahead and kick this off. Good morning. My name is Brenna Howell, I'm the Emergency Operations Manager for Southern County, and...
John Shallowitz, Southern County Fire Chief.
We're going to give you a presentation today on the, and summarize what happened in the Buttes Fire. We're going to pick it off with some incident management details, and then we'll go into some brief lessons learned from that incident, so. Okay, go for it.
Okay. So, we're going to go, like as Brenna said, we're going to go over, and I like to walk and talk, so I probably won't be here, I'm a little bit mobile, showing you the map. Hopefully that doesn't hurt anything with your film.
Just want you to speak up.
So I'll talk loud, I'm good at that sometimes. So basically, we're going to give this overview, this is a picture that was professionally taken the night, the first night of the fire, to kind of get, yeah, don't do that. So basically, this is a professional picture taken of the Buttes Fire. And I'd like to go into one thing first, and a lot of questions that have come out since the incident about how the fire department names fires. And there was some confusion from the social media and some of our employees, how we name fires. And the fire department usually names them geographically by where the fire is, or off like a road that it starts up. There's questions about the car fire. The car fire started off Car Powerhouse Road, off Highway 299, that's why it's called a car fire. It wasn't an actual car fire, it was something else, but, so that's how that, those things start. With the Buttes Incident, there was a lot of confusion in the beginning, people thinking this fire was in Butte. We called it Buttes, and he called it Southern Buttes, he called it the Buttes Incident to make it very simple, and that's the reason that we did that. So without killing a dead horse, that's why we do that. So, on an incident overview, this is actually pretty early on the incident, this picture here is probably within the first hour of the fire starting. The fire started Tuesday, July 31st, at about five o'clock in the afternoon. The fire started on the east side of 11201 Pass Road, okay? If anybody doesn't know where that is, it's just over the pass on Pass Road, or just over the peak on Pass Road, and in between that road and Brockman Canyon Road, and I'll kind of show you on the map where that is. So basically, that fire started, your fire services were actually on another fire at that time. We were all in the South County, far to South County, just south of Oswald, of our Oswald Station, on Oswald Road, actually, on a structured fire, and all our resources were committed down there where this fire was reported. So we had challenges right off the back. Obviously, everybody knows California's in the wildfire season of history, we've seen some of the largest fires in history in the past year. Two of the largest fires in state of California have happened within the past twelve months. So we're now seeing, we're going to get hit with these things too, in the Buttes. So, basically, so the fire started, first team units, we had help from Meridian Fire Department, they were named quickly, got in there, and the fire was, they said initially the size of a bus when they first got there. I was about, I don't know, eight minutes behind that first in unit, and as it says right there, it was already about sixty to a hundred acres within eight minutes. The fire was being wind-driven, it went up the hill pretty quick, and immediately, if people can't see here, right there, those are our big communication towers that are in the Buttes. Very large infrastructure, not just for the county, for state level, federal level, emergency, emergency responders have a lot of their stuff over here, CAL FIRE, DEA, CIA, FBI, there's a lot of stuff up there. Huge site, very important for us to make sure we didn't burn that down. So immediately, that was my priority, to make sure that we did not lose that, and try to redirect that fire. As the fire grew, obviously, I was explaining something about Southern County, we're different than almost, well, we're different than any other county in the state except for one other county, which is San Francisco County, when it comes to fire operations. CAL FIRE, because of the state fire agency, has responsibilities in every county, except for Southern County and San Francisco County. Meaning, they don't have, I don't have that resource in my pocket to just make unlimited works of resources. So we had a challenge from the get-go, getting the resources here, the financial way of how we pay for those things, but as we get to the end of this, this incident would have been well over two million dollars to run this incident. This was, and this was only a day and a half incident. So we got a lot of resources, we got a lot of help, I'll get into that in just a minute. But, basically, so that you understand, we have to request resources very specifically, how we do it, and they don't have to give them to us. And they don't have to give them to us. Because we don't have CAL FIRE here. They don't have any responsibility here. The only small piece of property within the county that is actually a state-owned property is in the very dead center of the Buttes. It's called Peace Valley Park. And that's run by the state parks. And we actually, as Sutter County Fire, have a fire contract with that. CAL FIRE has no responsibility in that. So we already have to get a lot of challenges right off the bat. Obviously, with staffing issues within my department, myself, looking at trying to fill positions. And also, we run very thin with the level of knowledge staff that we have within our department, which is something we're trying to work for to find out how we can fix that issue. With all the AUCs that were in the county, as I put direction up to the board and updates, with all these fires going on, I had two strike teams out, which is five engines and a strike team leader on different fires. We were all fully staffed. We were not at a situation where those strike teams being out influenced how many people we can get into the Buttes and why we fought this fire. And why it got so big. I had nothing to do with that. So I'm going to get that out there too. So basically, as this fire moved through, it began to get bigger. I did recourse, request resources from CAL FIRE. And as people saw, probably through the internet, we had aircraft, we had helicopters, four air tankers. We had what's called an air attack, who's basically a boss in the air. And I got a lot of ground resources from CAL FIRE to help with the overhead level, which is my level, more of the command level stuff. Worked great with the, as you can see right here, tag team with the Sheriff's Department. A great response from our dispatchers. They were very overwhelmed, as you would only imagine. The Sutter Buttes, obviously, is the center of Sutter County. Everybody looks to the Sutter Buttes. When we see a large smoke coming out of the Sutter Buttes, obviously, everybody in the household is concerned about that because it's our pride and joy. So there were a lot of calls coming into the public communications center. They were able to get me a command van, which is jointly staffed by our staff and the Sheriff's Department, which was a great resource. And I'll get into a lot of the thank yous here in just a little bit. But as the fire increased, we moved into a situation where the fire went up, started going up towards the towers. We attacked the fire from the air very heavily. It was a very remote fire for us to be able to make access to. Not good access on this fire. This fire grew greatly because we couldn't even make access to it. We had to watch it burn all on the ground. The good thing about where this fire burned, not many homes, not many infrastructure set for the towers, the towers up here and multiple gas stations, or gas stations, gas wells, sorry, that are in the Buttes. But we really, we had a grass fire. And we really didn't have anything out in front of it. Wind shifted about right in the middle of this fire. The wind shifted and there's four residences to the, right here, if you look over on the map, four residences to the west on Pass Road, which immediately, this fire started burning this way, towards the west. So it went off this picture this way, which changed from what's going on in this picture. As you can tell, the wind's blowing it that way. We had this picture bigger, you see a big fire over here. It pushed off that way towards Brockman Canyon. We were concerned. And at that point, with the help of the Sheriff's Department and UCDP, we're able to get officers in there immediately to evacuate the four residences off Pass Road. And then also do advisory evacuations of Telok Road in case we had a wind shift to the east. And also off Westview on the far west side, we were able to get them advisory. And as we talked about during the floods, do you want me to go over the advisory versus? Okay, so everybody understands what's the difference between mandatory and advisory. That's been a great topic for the past two years of how, what evacuations and how you say it. Mandatory evacuations is get out. And it's your responsibility to get out. We have imminent danger to you, and that's why we would say that. An evacuation advisory was more put in the role to, we have a problem. It could affect you. We want you to be ready to go among those. If you want to leave, it would be highly suggestive. That's where an advisory comes in. So for everybody to understand.
And I think it's important to mention too with the mandatory evacuations is once we call for those mandatory evacuations, we cannot physically force people from their homes. But we do have the authority to let them back in. So sometimes people think that when we call for mandatory, we physically, we do go house to house. We call, we post it on social media. But we can't make them leave their homes if they choose to do so. We saw that over the weekend in the fire, the holy fire in Orange County and Riverside County. Lots of residents decided to stay with very active volatile fire and put themselves in danger. So that also leads to the confusion sometimes.
And that also lends to some of the things we see happen with fires each year where people not taking advice and being... So as the fire progressed, we had resources from numerous departments. I tapped into what's called the Master Mutual Aid Agreement. It used to be called what's called the Seven Points of Life Agreement, if anybody has ever heard of that. Basically, the way that works, the emergency services, since I've gone half CAL FIRE within our county, I got to have some way to get resources here to help the citizens. One word over, over text. So I requested these resources, like I said, through that agreement. They were able to provide me a lot of resources. We were able to get resources out of Sacramento County, which was for free. Great, great response out of other departments. So basically, this fire, as you can tell over here, went big, right? Where I said it started, we started to go up. Initially, the fire grew at about a rate of about three to four hundred acres per hour. It was moving at a pretty good clip. Started to die down that night. We initially had put it at twenty-two hundred acres. And this is another line of concern that people were very vocal about. Is I initially put it out, it was twenty-two hundred acres, and then the next morning it went down to eight hundred acres. That's very common in fires, very common. Because what happens is that fire was covered in smoke. And they're trying to judge that from an air crack. And so they tried to block the fire, they blocked us. Until the morning, we got a really good picture of it. We then figured out the actual perimeters of the fire, were able to figure out the total size. Initially, it says here twenty-two hundred acres. At the end of the fire, we ended up with about twelve hundred and forty acres. We saved, call it twelve hundred acres. Twelve thirty-seven is the exact number of acres. And we contained it at twenty-one hundred hours on the first. During that time, well, and the last part of that fire, fire is currently under investigation of how it started. It was suspicious in nature and we will be working to make sure we get a call off on that. So with the fire, without getting too much into the exact what took place in the fire, I'd like to get into, this is a key part. The fire agency, what we saw from surrounding agencies, our public and our other divisions in this county was amazing. I couldn't ask for better support. Sutter County, Utes City, Marysville, Linda, Alters, Meridian, Maxwell, Sac River, East Nicholas, Bludgero, Beale Air Force Base, Sacramento Metropolitan, Sacramento City consumed this fire, which is Elgro. CAL FIRE and CAL OES all had resources within the county, and we didn't pay them a cent for it. They were here to help further out. So that's very respectful, extremely high-level support. Supporting agencies for us, obviously, by company ambulance, great job. When we did this place, the four people, Brenna will kind of go over that. We did have, did initially open a evacuation center at Center High School. They were very nice, did everything open and great calls started with us and Brenna with some of that stuff. County departments, Sheriff's Office, I cannot thank them the most. They were extremely supportive from the side of just trying to keep people out of the Buttes and keep them, let us do our operation with their traffic control, to the evacuations and to the logistical support with communications and obviously the command van that currently we have within the county. General Services, my communication within these incidents is I have something to do in the field and I communicate with Brenna and the CIO's office and the PIOs on the side. And Brenna can kind of go into that.
So with the county departments, because they're typically called into the emergency operations center, but with a fire like this, because it's not CAL FIRE's jurisdiction, we also, the EOC, needs to support the incident itself. So the county departments not only supported us at the EOC level, they supported all of the operations that were going on at the command post, such as like quarter potties, the command van, staffing, road closures, road departments, sheltering, human services staff, things like that. So we're used to, I'm used to, when CAL FIRE comes into an incident, they bring all of that stuff to support the incident. And then I can deal with the county level stuff, the human services, the public health, the media, social media, all of those things that we need to do, briefing our elected officials and things like that. So the county departments provided a ton of support to us that, and we're really appreciative of that. And then also the private support. The private support was really great because they started feeding people on their own. The citizens came out and really wanted to support the fire command post, and they did that. They ate dinner, they fed them breakfast, they brought coffee. They were going to run equipment if we needed them, although we couldn't do that. But they were there to support, willingly support us there.
It's the first time I saw three hundred Little Caesar pizzas. And it's still a lot, there was three hundred pizzas there.
And then lunch the next day. And of course, By County doesn't have to stage there. By County ambulance staged there with a full crew to make sure that everybody was rehabbed. Had Gatorade, had water, had ice, packed the lunches for the incoming crews. And so when we have crews coming in on mutual aid, we need to be able to support them. And that's exactly what we were able to do.
And that's really key to remember from the financial standpoint, is the citizens really came through and saved us financially in this, in this fire. Different AUCs, Rolling Stone Pizza came out and served over two-hundred-and-sixty pizzas. Let me tell you, inmate on a fire crew has never been served a pizza. And they did, they got pizzas, and they were custom pizzas. They want to come back to Sutter County. Talk to you in a couple, but on a lighter note there. But very seriously, the public and, we have multiple thank yous going out to these people that assisted us. We wouldn't have been able to do it without them. And we would not have financially, we would have seen a larger financial hit had we did not get the support from the public. So very important that we recognize our public and how we came together as a community.
All right, so before, so we learned some things that night. We learned some things that night, especially me. This was the first incident, real incident, I had gone through here since coming on with the county. I'd heard all of the stories about the Oroville disaster, but I actually got to live this. So this was a good lesson for me. But first off, we have to just acknowledge what went well. And John's talked about it already, but I want to mention it again. It was the cooperation internally and externally. At my level in the EOC, the coordination and the communication is the number one thing that we do. We provide coordination, we provide resources and technical specialists to the field forces. So when we called, they paid. That's important. I don't know that, I know that other jurisdictions sometimes have issues with that. So I was happy, very happy with that. Our communications with dispatch in those initial hours were critical. And those public safety dispatchers were there for me. My only touch to the incident with John for the first couple hours was through a dispatcher. And so that was, that was super helpful to me to be able to relay information in our operations center and then push it out. The use of the command van was a huge support for John. And how fast and quickly that had dispatched from the Sheriff's Department out to the field was great. And so I think those command van exercises that the county staff have been doing every quarter are well worth their weight in gold. And then we had a lot of support from the city of Utes City. City of Utes City really helped us out a lot. I know on the fire side, they helped out Chief Shallowitz. And then on my side, coordination of information, just to relay what was going on so that they were kept in the loop. And then lastly, as far as what went well for us, and I'm sure there's many more, but I'm just taking some of the highlights, is that coordination and the relationship between Chief Shallowitz and my office. If we don't have that kind of coordination and that relationship building with our field, then I'm not going to be able to do a huge, a good job for the county. It's going to be tougher for me to do. So, so those were the lessons, those were the what went wells. Lessons learned, professional radio communications staff supports public safety department. So we have a very intricate radio system here in Sutter County. And I'm going to let John talk about that. But one of the things that we're going to need to start looking at is to employ somebody that can help us maintain that system. So do you want to expand on that?
So basically, what we did is we took the advantage of this incident to be able to go through an after-action report and sat with the department heads that were involved and the major players that were involved within this incident. And we were able to take down some things that we learned, some things that went well and things that really didn't go so well. Communications is a challenge. Obviously, in an area like the Sutter Buttes, it's very hard. You would think there's a huge radio tower on the top of the Buttes that we would have great communications. We have some of the worst communications once we get into that area. And where this first, first statement comes out, we're proven need of a professional radio communications staff. We are definitely in need of this. A lot of counties employ a public safety, radio communications person. Not necessarily just for public safety, but they do radio communications within the county, through Public Works, anybody who has any type of communication systems, they manage those. We have a very intricate system that's based off of Buttes, which is called the Interlocibility Program. That we can actually talk to any agency. After the nine-eleven, one of the things that came out after nine-eleven is that police, fire, emergency services, Public Works, all couldn't talk to each other. They were all doing their own thing. And it was anarchy. Whereas we have, we do have that capability to do that. And with that command van that came out, I was able to start patching those things. We did have some issues, had to call more staff in. Where if we had this person in place, this would be their job to manage that system. That system is very important also because it allows a lot of us to get grants when you have that system in place. When you don't have that type of system in place, you're not necessarily qualified for a lot of the grants we can look at. We looked at having a dedicated hotline for the citizens. We looked at the dispatcher being overwhelmed, looked at Brenna being overwhelmed. If anybody in this room tried to call me on my personal cell, I'm sorry. I threw it across my truck and I never answered it for two days. And I believe my, within the first hour, my phone was full. So we see that. And we need to find a way to stop that type of communication. Where we take those communications, not that we don't give information to the public, that we find a place to put that as one central place. And we get good information, quality intelligence, not information, and not rumors out to the public. And that's very important that we do that.
So we're working with IT, and that's something that we can do very quickly here. And we'll be getting that out and getting that up and running shortly, over the next couple of weeks. The other thing that was very apparent to me here is that we need to have more people trained on social media and social media communicators to just monitor the traffic and provide updates. Whether there's anything to update or not, we can say that. We can say, you know, there isn't an update to containment of the fire at this time, but we'll get you an update in the next hour. So Chuck and I are going to be working on that over the next several months to conduct some of that kind of training and then just recruit internally people that we can call into the operations center and come in and just manage social media so that we can provide more information. That's another way to get information out. And in this world today with social media, we have to be in front of it. And then recruitment of field response PIOs. Chuck was in the field early. As soon as we called for him, he was there. However, we need more PIOs. This was a small incident. If we had another Oroville spillway or if we have floods this winter, we're going to need more people that we can dispatch out to the field. So we're going to look to our public safety departments internally into the county and then look at our cities, ask them for people that we can call up and then, and dispatch out to the field from a public safety standpoint. It's very important that those that respond out the field understand public safety and can speak that language.
It's really important for everybody to understand that a lot of these incidents that are going on within the state, each fire has twenty to thirty PIOs on that fire. They are, it's a very, very in-depth, it's something that is now just growing in the public information officer levels of what the information, the public is always more and more demanding. Every time they have more emergencies, people want to know. And they always want to know information faster than we can get it out. And there's always a lot of questions to the incident of what we need to do. Chuck did a great job. I owe him an apology because I was not good at getting information to him because I was overwhelmed in the beginning. But he stood by me and we kept coming up and asking for information. And as we got it, we tried to get it out to him as much as we possibly could. Did a great job on a field interview with the news, kept the news off my back. Thank you for that. I was a little overwhelmed. But anyway, that public, that field response PIOs is something that we're going to be looking to the other. You don't have to be a fireman. You don't have to be a police officer to do this job. You just have to know how to talk to people. So we're going to be looking to the different divisions to assist us in the emergency management. Because it doesn't have to be just for fires, it could be anything.
And then lastly on this one, what are the expectations of the staff, so us, from our elected officials ahead of time? our elected officials ahead of time? We really want to get that nailed down so that we can meet those expectations moving forward. So we know what you expect from us and we can try and deliver that to you. So just to, do you want us to go a little faster?
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll cover this a little bit faster. So again, keeping with the theme of getting out information faster to the public, we're working on it. And we're getting ready to purchase executive contract for an alert and warning system that will help us do that much quicker. If I had had that in the EOC that night, I could have reached out over multiple phone lines, multiple text messages and notified everybody that there was a situation going on in the buttes. Wildland firefighting potential contract?
One of the things that we address that is, is we don't have that Cal Fire influence, is looking at the possibility and we're gonna be entertaining that with our neighboring Cal Fires in it to see what it would do to put a Cal Fire Agency agreement to be able to protect the buttes. That gets us the whole gamut of all these PIOs, everything we would need possibly if the, if the wildland situation was to take off in the buttes, we would be able to call to them. It is a financial thing, contract, and we'll have to see what we can go forward with that.
And then an improved web presence on our Center County webpage. An implementation of our GIS, which is Geographic Information System, it's basically mapping. We're gonna put real-time mapping up on our webpage and social media so that the citizens are fully aware of what's going on in real-time as it unfolds. We've already developed that and that. And then lastly, we're considering looking at having what I'm calling a Forward Emergency Operations Center somewhere downtown in our Civic Center offices. So that if we have a smaller scale incident, we can activate it there rather than going out to Center. And then, oh, go ahead. Goals moving forward. So what can you expect from our offices in the coming year? We're gonna do more training. We need to train more people. We need to practice as well. So we're gonna do some exercises where we get together and go through a scenario and talk about how we would go through that incident. We talked about the staff. We're updating emergency plans. The plans haven't been updated in this county for several years. So one of the big charges that my office has is to update those plans. We secured a grant with the Department of Water Resources for about $800,000 and we'll be kicking off that project later on this year to work on flood response planning. And also there's an evacuation planning component to that. And then also flood fight with our reclamation history. So to improve those relationships on how we're going to respond to flood disasters. And then just continued relationship building within the operational area. When I got here, one of my first charges was that we need to build relationships with our partners and I think we're doing that. We work very closely with Uta City right now and they're, they've been a huge asset to us.
There we go. That's a presentation. If anybody has any questions, obviously we're short for time here today. Feel free to contact me or Brenna at our offices and we're happily to sit down and discuss. Any questions for the board?
Yes, we have your questions. To the chair. First of all, I'd like to commend both of you on, I think it was a first-class operation myself. I mean, yeah, there's some issues that we need to address and you as professionals will address those within the county. One of my biggest questions is that, you know, I've seen the fires. With all the communication towers that are up there on top, do we ever have any preventative maintenance programs that will clear all any of that stuff around there and say, hey, if it burns up there, it's not gonna touch those towers at all?
So that is a privately owned area up there, Home Tour Communications. In great communications with Jake Clay who runs that from the Calusa area. He was actually there at the fire, very appreciative of how, what we did not do damage. We did very minimal damage to the towers. Actually, it was more like we burnt up some railroad ties that were, that's really what we burned. And some very minimal damage to some internet stuff that was up there. Yes, I discussed that with him. And we're gonna be moving forward with a plan to actually get some wildland clearance around those. It's a very challenging site. It's, it's, the backside of it is a cliff. To get it clean, people have to go on ropes and use chainsaws. And it's, it's going to be a very hard project, but yes, Jake is, is willing to work with us to make sure we can get those towers protected.
About any fire, because, you know, majority of it's been for a long time. The buttes burn all the time. But is there any fire outreach that goes on with the citizens of the buttes that have homes? Do, we often go out there and say, hey, you might want to flare this area just in case there's brush fire again?
Yes, absolutely. The staff, my staff goes out and does the maintenance. They do go out on complaints and they also do education on that. We can look to address that at a, at a better level, especially in the buttes. And really doing that help outreach will help, obviously. Once we start moving forward with our alert and warning system, we're gonna have a very large media release when we do that. I think that's gonna be a perfect time for us to get that information out to the public.
One other way we're gonna be able to do that is we're gonna be updating our local hazard mitigation plan. And mitigation is basically prevention of our priority hazards in the county. And those kinds of projects will be in there. And that prep plan is approved by the board. Public information projects, redevelopment projects, fire, 100-foot defensive space projects will be in there that you guys will actually get to review and approve.
Obviously, we've faced in the last couple of years, you know, evacuation of Oroville and the situation here with the new fire. Can we see how other counties are, how they can do to prepare, to prepare for emergency situations? You know, we're putting those tools, we always have fire drills, earthquake drills, intruder drills, stuff like that. So, you know, what are other counties going to, you know, that will benefit us to be better prepared for the next time?
Yes, absolutely. And that, that is our goal, to make sure we, this was an eye-opener for me, I know, how we operate at our levels. And we are challenged, as I said, unlike other counties. And we do have our own special challenges within the county. But we saw an incredible support. Cal Fire has reached out to help me to come up with different answers for that, how we can get through that and how other counties are doing. Working with the different fire chiefs locally. Great support, obviously, from Sacramento, Sacramento City, Sacramento County. We had great support all over and they are willing to help us with everything. With that DWR and that mitigation stuff that we're gonna be working on through the grant, we'll see a lot of that. A lot of that will come forward.
Well, and then at my level, I work with all the surrounding emergency managers, attend their trainings, attend their meetings, their exercises. And so we share best practices all the time. So we'll be implementing things that I've seen happening in Sacramento or in Yule County and put them into play here through our planning, training, exercise, through our whole program.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Minister. Mr. Chairman, before to add to that. Interesting, Brenna, John and I have been talking about doing a mock exercise. And we're trying to figure out the right time to do that. And then we had this real life event. So we had done training with Uta City. We did one recently a few months ago. We had also one before that with the elected officials training that took place. So it's on our to-do list. This was a really good exercise for us, but we'll definitely put that in our to-do list and we'll share with the board. We'll have a couple of trainings over the next year. So I'll commit now that we do that. We'll do a simulation. What's that? It's a simulated, simulated exercises are key. And we're also gonna take a look at the buffer question that supervises Whitaker raised. Many counties and cities do have buffers. We don't here, so we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'd like to, since Whitaker's saying, control of vegetation around the tower here has been great. You know, many groups were, groups with sheep up there or goats to work that brush and stuff down on an ongoing basis, keep it away. And, and also I must commend everybody. I think everybody did a fantastic job. Considering the whole state was burning at the time, to get resources in here was absolutely incredible. So I think it could have been a really different picture. And I don't know where you found it, but you got it.
Under a rock, somewhere, I don't know. Yes, we got, we got great support.
So a couple of comments from me too. I'd really like to commend you on a job well done. It was, you know, I know it was a little hairy in the beginning as things were getting started, but you got it well under control. And then once the information did get out, then it started coming out. And just knowing that you controlled the fire and put it out within a short period of time. I look forward to supporting you and thanking others for the resources as well. So if there's anything you need from us in terms of thanking the outside agencies, the other county departments that got involved, which we saw everything coming to the table. And it was, it was great to see all that activity and especially the private citizens who did jump up. I know Brenna, you called one and got her out of bed.
Yeah.
I remember hearing that. But it's, it's like knowing that those resources come together there. I think this was, you know, a good practice exercise, it wasn't real, but, you know, knowing that we can handle much larger issues and then how to approach those issues is really good. The one question I did have is that I know that in Sonoma County, they have a fire symposium that's being sponsored by the, by the county. I'm not sure which department, but probably Fire. So I don't, maybe you can take a look at how they're doing that, but they're speaking actually more to the public in terms of how to control fire issues, you know, how to prepare for disaster in general. And they're, they're pretty actively involved. I know there's some supervisors also working with them on that. So maybe you can take a look at something like that. I think you had some plans already working with the public, but I'd like to see more of like a town hall sort of environment, maybe one per district or something where you talk to groups of public and let them know in terms of disaster preparedness. Because we're coming off the big evacuation where everybody was still wondering, you know, which way do we, which way do we drive out? What do we do? And there was a lot of panic involved. So that, you know, that panic still is lasting. And we, we noted that as, as the, as the fire was taking place, you know, not only was your phone full, but our phones were filled, right? So we got all these calls and we didn't know, we gotta know what to do with them. And I think it'd be great if we can inform the public and keep them going. And I'm glad to hear about the practice scenarios and if we can just share with the public even more, we can do that. But thank you. Great job.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
At one time, Chief Shallowitz, up there in the buttes, we used to spray actually up to the fence line. I noticed there was an awful lot of grass over the road down. Maybe we can help a little bit of that by, you know, roadside spraying. But also at one time, the landlord responded for disky, long fence on their side, at least the two discs with.
Yeah, so that, that disc line was in place. This fire moved right through that disc line. It was roadside start and didn't make it past that. It had in fact, it started right at a gas well. So there was a large gravel area where it started and the fire had enough potential and it went around. So they, there was some effort made, but yes, I do agree with you, there can be a better remediation project put into the buttes to be able to get roads, stop that roadside starts and kind of like supervisor Whitaker said.
Okay. Do you have any comments on the board?
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to give you guys a hand actually for the, we're gonna take a five-minute break, Scott.
No loss.
Alright, five minutes. Before, before we get started, I want to just let you know that you need to speak up in this room because other than that microphone, there's no other microphones and we are recording the meeting too. Just want to let everybody know, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we're gonna move into the next subject, which is homelessness, but before we get that, one on my own thought on the fire incident, it's if you stop and think about it, we are a rural fire department with a limited number of paid firefighters. You know, we have some issues with that, we're working our way through that. But up until the last couple of decades, it was all volunteers. So if you look at how far this county has evolved and what is expected of our fire, fire personnel, they are expected to do way more than they're able to deliver. So we appreciate the relationship with Uta City Fire Department and our Urban Fire Department and the other departments around us. But I'm real proud of the fire chief and what they were, what they're able to do on such a small shoestring budget, it was truly amazing. So having said that, I'm gonna ask Scott Thurman, to our housing consultant, to come and talk to you about the current state of homelessness. And as a reminder, we will be in front of the board, I believe, on September of November or it's not that date, it's coming up. And we'll get back to you on update on the long-term homeless management plan as well as your citizen committee, all the work they've done and their recommendation on a site for a temporary housing shelter facility. So having said that, I'll turn to Scott to come up and give his presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and board members, thank you for having me here today. I'm gonna briefly share with you.
He speaks right into the mic. Thank you.
I'm gonna briefly share with you today regarding homeless management. And if you have questions as we go on, you'll be sharing a good deal of information. If you have questions as I'm going over these slides, just feel free to speak up at that point. Again, quite a bit of information. So just wanted to share with you a few activities that we've been involved in over the last year. And as you can see here with the overview, we've been working on to validate a shelter concept to serve the Center County homeless population. And we've also been providing staff support to the ad hoc shelter location site review committee and as well as the Bye County Committee on Homelessness and as well as the Center County staff as well. So within this process, we've been facilitating regional cooperation for homeless planning. And we've been also supporting local partnerships for services. And that's been a very important component as well. And then we've been identifying and securing funding sources for homeless services and also for shelter construction. And I'll talk, you can learn about that in detail. And then we've been working on, we're beginning to formulate the long-term homeless management. And there's a few items within that, that development services, services we'll talk about in detail. So we'll let you talk about that at a later point. So the ad hoc committee summary, what's happening with the ad hoc, the ad hoc committee? Most of the committee members decided to continue on after the selection of a site. And there was one committee member that decided to no longer participate. But we have a, we have a very good committee, very smart committee, intelligent. They are balancing the needs of the community with compassion for the homeless population. And so we're glad to continue on with them and get their input. We had a meeting in July and that committee meeting, the highlight of the committee meeting was development services. They shared about both potential sites, the behavioral health site as well as Glad Tidings Church parcel. And the conclusion was that the Glad Tidings location really has some significant infrastructure and zoning issues. And one of the vital community members actually brought that up and mentioned that during the meeting. And so the determination was that it's, it's best to go with the behavioral health location as far as a potential temporary and maybe permanent shelter site. And so that was the conclusion of the ad hoc committee. And then within this, the considerations from the decision of the ad hoc committee moving forward for the supervisors to consider is should we move forward with the 1965 High Vol location as a temporary shelter site? And should we actually, within that, should we move forward with it as a permanent site as well? And then also, should we have tough shed at that site or tents? The configuration of the site and the operations will be different accordingly, according to what we select within that. And then also I'll talk a little bit, a little later about the regional shelter concept. And this is, this is a new concept that's come on, that's come on the scene within the last couple of weeks. So I'll talk about that in a little bit. So the, the tent option, this would be 12, five 12-person tents with accessory units that would be made available for the homeless population. So simple configuration within that. And this has the breakdown on that development services during the time. We'll talk about that in more detail as far as how this site would be configured. And then also there's the tough shed option and this would be very similar to the 14-4 site in Uta City. And we're talking about 32-person structures with accessory units. Excuse me, Uta County, Uta County? And this, you can see the configuration of that for the site as well. And then operations, that's yet to be determined. We've had some dialogue with Salvation Army. We've had some dialogue with Salvation Army, the operations of the site along with Kansas Pope. And, but what we have been in contact with Kansas Pope concerning is they operate the coordinated entry location within Uba City. And operationally, what we're looking at is during the daytime, homeless individuals would be at the coordinated entry location. And if you remember, originally, we talked about a 24/7 concept at a particular site. So if we're able to have homeless individuals at the coordinated entry site Monday through Friday, eight to five, that would save a significant amount of general fund money for the proposed project. So we've got a verbal commitment within that, we'll need to solidify that in the future. There might be some cost to this particular option, but again, this will be much less than the concept of 24/7 onsite. And then as, as you are aware, well aware of, there's been regional collaboration with homeless services and homeless planning. The by-county homeless services, the O U team, has been very active in meeting on a monthly basis. And what we've seen within that process is an increased level of cooperation and planning within both counties and the jurisdictions as well. Right now, there's a significant amount of momentum as it relates to homeless planning and homeless services. In fact, we are in process of developing a homeless strategic plan. That particular plan will likely be available at the end of the year. That's in process. And then also, as I mentioned earlier, there's been a consensus to pursue a regional shelter concept, and this is being led by the Salvation Army. Now, this is a little bit of a challenging scenario because which one do we, which one do we pursue? Do we pursue the viable location or do we pursue this regional shelter concept? Those that are planning out the regional shelter concept, what I have instructed them as far as planning is that if they head down this path, they need to head down it very quickly and they need to identify a viable site. And as we know, within the circumstance, within the selection of regional shelter site, the location is going to be key as far as, you know, the viability of it. And so Salvation Army is leading that process and they are currently in discussion regarding a couple of sites. The primary location they're looking at at this point is their current depot location, demoing that site and creating a larger shelter location for singles and some families. And also coordinated entry would be located at that location as well. So Salvation Army is in process of presenting that concept to Uba County and then after that to Marysville as possible. Okay, funding. So this is a very unique time in homeless services and funding availability. I think I might have shared before that no other time in my 25 years have I seen this much funding as it relates to homeless services at the state level. And I'll talk about the detailed funding sources that are available. And then we are also dialoguing with some of the local foundations as far as funding different homeless initiatives, and we'll talk about that as well coming through. So what are the major sources we are looking at at this point in time that you're aware of? Is No Place Like Home. The No Place Like Home is over $2 billion in funding from the state of California for permanent supportive housing for the homeless male youth. And as you are aware of, the, there's an allocation of $1 million to Sutter and Uba County for a 40-unit project. And that will be allocated to the 40-unit project being facilitated by the regional housing authority. And then we are also looking at in Marysville, the Españo Motel, which is 14 studio units. And the idea is to start small and then for each of the four rounds, pursue a permanent supportive housing project. And we haven't identified the additional locations at this point, but that's the plan at this stage. And then the heat program is a new funding, funding source. It's a one-time funding source coming to the region. It'll be in the amount of 2.6 million. And, and that will, that can be used for shelters, they're calling navigation centers, which is basically a coordinated entry type, one-stop location. And then coordinated entry itself, those are the eligible uses. This funding will be coming through the Southern Uba Homeless Consortium. The state is expecting that the consortium works in conjunction with jurisdictions on the side of how to utilize this funding. So this, what's been dialogued about so far within this is that, is a scenario where we would look at increasing the overall number of shelter beds in the region. And again, that can be done by a regional project, but also we can look at individual shelter sites as well and renovation projects and new construction projects within that. And this is also a new funding source, cash. Cash is going to be a combination of two one-time funding sources to Sutter and Uba County. We don't know the exact amount available, but I'm guessing somewhere in the 300 to 600,000 dollar range. And, and this funding can be used for a variety of different services listed below there. On an ongoing basis, Sutter County can apply, after the two allocation rounds, Sutter County can apply for additional funding at the, at the state level. This funding source works much like the balance of state C D G program where you can apply and will be competing statewide for this funding. So that's a resource that you can use to address homelessness within the region. And then housing for helping families, this is a new source. We don't know much detail about this particular funding source, but it's going to be, it's going to be focused on supportive housing and sort of grants and loans and combination. So I think it's going to work in conjunction with No Place Like Home. And then the CalWorks HSP, and this is, and this is important to note. So CalWorks, CalWorks HSP is a, is a current, current existing funding source that Sutter County receives funds for, and it focuses on rapid rehousing for families. What's important to note about this is as we are talking about the shelter, the shelter concept, we really should be focusing on singles primarily. And the reason why is, is that the CalWorks, CalWorks HSP program will, the funding score will increase and there's going to be sufficient funding to house families, to put them in motels temporarily and then help them seek housing overall. So if we look at shelter, we really should look at families going into motels, but singles being in some type of overall shelter building. And then we're also pursuing Medical funding. And this funding will be utilized for homeless case management. And it's likely that case managers will be located at coordinated entry. The way we're structuring things regionally is that case management won't need to take place at, at the shelter locations. All case management and client assistance in that manner will take place at coordinated entry. So these case managers will be embedded by coordinated entry. And then also where we've been in dialogue with Adventist Health, Adventist Health is, is looking to be a strong partner as it relates to homeless services within Sutter and Uba County. We had a very good meeting with them, with their CEO and one of their administrative staff. And in my sense within this is that as far as homeless planning and homeless services, we're going to have to keep up with the CEO. He's that aggressive when it comes to wanting to address homeless services, homelessness within the region. And this can be combined with a new state. So we have a concept, let me back up a little bit, we have a concept of a regional homeless outreach team. And this is really going to be a foundational component for us. We're looking at a scenario where we have a, a strike team that would include law enforcement and, and social services and case managers that if you have homeless client A who's out on the street, this team would go and engage that individual and let them know their options. And of course, the option would be, one of the options would not include staying at that particular location. So this is going to be a very foundational, very important component that's foundational. The plan is also that this team would address homeless individuals that frequent the Adventist Health location and their emergency room. So this would be a win-win scenario for Adventist. So they're looking to invest in this and again, if you use state funding to enhance that for them. And then, I'm sorry. And then also Sutter Medical Foundation, we've been in dialogue with the Sutter Medical Foundation. We're, we're unsure exactly how they want to invest, but we get the sense that they do want to invest in homeless services within the region. And we are going to be submitting to them an application for the temporary shelter location and also for expanding of coordinated entry. What's important within this though is that we're sure that Sutter Medical Foundation, they might fund these activities, but they're also going to want to see a permanent option as part of the overall plan. So if we approach them, we want to have an idea of how we're going to address the shelter option on a permanent basis. And then conclusions and suggestions, my, our team's suggestions are that we continue to, continue to pursue the state and local funding sources. As I mentioned, there's a good amount of momentum going at this point in time, so we want to pursue those sources and plan services. And, and we believe it's essential to continue to participate in the regional planning, planning process through the by-county team. And, and then also looking at developing a temporary shelter option. And it's likely with what we're looking at as options, whether it's the viable location, the current building, or a regional option, it's, it's appearing that we are going to need to operate the temporary location for at least two years. And then perhaps move into a permanent location at that point. And so within this, we also want to consider that the permanent regional shelter option or the, the local option when it comes to a potential shelter site. And then our overall plan is on, at the September 11th, the board supervisors meeting will present the long-term homeless plan at that point. And then also the temporary site, site, shelter, excuse me, the temporary homeless shelter site recommendation. I'll get it out there. All right. So any questions?
Sure. Dr. Board, yes. To the chair. What's your, what you're asking now, the total homeless, total family and numbers?
You know, when we look at coordinated entry, off the top of my head, I remember the numbers that coordinated entry is serving within the region, about 800 who are accessing.
Is that with both counties or just?
That's with both counties.
Okay, both counties.
Yeah, and, and coming up, we'll, we'll be doing a full count in January of this upcoming year, so we'll have a better sense of the, the number, the overall numbers in January 2018.
So the site we're looking at, about the area that we have.
You know, that's a very, that's a very good question. So if we're, if we're looking at numbers, my estimate is this, is that once we develop a shelter plan, whether it's regional or within Sutter County, that we can get up to somewhere around 250 shelter beds within the region. I believe somewhere between 250 to 300 is where we want to be. There's, there's no region, our new jurisdiction, that actually has enough shelter beds for all of their homeless population. And so I think if we get to that point, we can create an overall system that homeless individuals to the shelter through coordinated entry and then hopefully through permanent, to permanent housing.
Okay. Sure. So let's, let's take this in half and say that Sutter County shares 400 and Uba County shares probably more as well. And you stated that, you know, the goal is not to, not put the, the house or bike bedding space for, for 40 people. So my question is like, in a regional collaboration, you know, and I believe this is the best way to, to address it because I'm looking right at you, Mr. Gayle, is that the city of Uba City and Sutter County and city of Marysville and Uba County, we have to address this on a regional basis because all we're doing is pushing these homeless people to different areas, but we don't address the issues. Either they're gonna come, obviously they may now come over to Sutter County's side because Sutter County has not given a force our current ordinances. And so, but eventually we are going to enforce those ordinances and hopefully we'll enforce those in a regional capacity along with Uba County and the city of Uba City. So currently, just from your slides is that, you know, we have $2 million in funding for No Place Like Home, $2 million, 2.6 million in the heat project, and the cash is close to 300,000. How much more money do I have to keep on this site? I mean, in order to make a difference, you know? I mean, that's a lot of money to be looking at to go against homeless people. When the state of California basically tells me that I only have to provide a place of rest, all right? I don't have to provide a shelter. I don't have to provide a tough shed. I don't have to provide bathroom services. I just have to provide a place of rest. And so my biggest question is, is that if we're looking at a place of rest, and obviously viable, it's very useful to, what we want to create, why wouldn't we just create a minimal place of saying, hey, here's your place of rest, possibly throw some portable bathrooms out there, all good?
You know, that's, that's a very good question. Let me see how I can answer this carefully. You know, when we're, when we're looking at an overall homeless plan, we're looking at the homeless population and the needs of the homeless population and the best interests of the community, right? And I think I'm trying to just repeat that over and over again because that is, that's the mindset that we have. And having a scenario where there are no services and, and it's just a location where individuals can rest, I would argue that that's not in the best interest of the community at all. That it's in the best interest of Sutter County to help homeless individuals address their current needs and move them towards permanent supportive housing. And, and I'll be honest with you, within that, within this is, you know, it, when you have your average homeless individual, that homeless individual might go all the way through the system and then maybe two or three years down the road, might have to go through the system again. That's just the reality of homelessness. But if we, if we create an overall system where we're addressing the needs of individuals and, and also having a level of accountability, that is, that's going to be the best, best approach for Sutter County.
Mr. Thurman, obviously you're the expert on this homeless issue and I'm not, I'll be the first one to tell you that. But my understanding is with regards to the majority of the homeless population, they basically want to be left alone and on living conditions. Now you're telling me that, you know, if we create a bed space of, let's say 60 to 90 beds, that we're gonna have a fraternity of homeless people that all want to sleep together and be together. Firstly, I just don't see that. You know, and I could be wrong, and that's why I have to leave it to you to educate me to help me understand.
So if you could explain in more detail, so you're thinking that?
You know, for the homeless people that we have along the riverbanks, they're not all together in the same squad. They're not making, you know, tent cities and collaborating on, on different areas. They're pretty spread out along those riverbanks. And so they don't seem to be wanting to be all together in the same area. They might be in the same area to gather services as far as food and resources, but they're not going to go, you know, sleeping in instructors together in tents. but they're not going to go, you know, sleeping in structures together in tents together in one big tent. And I don't see that. I could be wrong. I just, like I said, educate me on this and help me understand.
The way I would answer that is in this manner. Overall, what we're trying to do is change the paradigm of homelessness. And you're right, within the region, your average homeless individual is accustomed to living in a tent or, you know, when I'm saying shanty type structure and making their way on a daily basis by whatever means. What we have to do message-wise, and that involves services, that involves ordinances, is send a message that this is what it means to be homeless in Southern County. If you are homeless in Southern County, the expectation is that you're going to engage in services. Now, there might be individuals who take a while to engage in those services, but that's going to be the expectation. We're going to have a system set up where coordinated entry services will be available to you, which include life skills, rapid rehousing, a variety of different services. And the expectation is that we want you to move towards permanent housing. There is a portion of the population that would choose and will likely to continue to try to choose to live their current lifestyle, but we have a chance to create a framework for that homeless individual that this is really the best choice that they can make and that they can see that choice. And just a little side note, we're dealing with that, we had that dialogue, we had a coordinated entry meeting this morning where we had that dialogue, where we said, hey, we're setting some framework, rules and guidelines within this process that every individual has to follow and has to proceed forward with. So that's important to know that we have that framework in place already, but we need to continue to send that message to the homeless population.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any other comments?
To the chair?
Yes, sir.
Scott, thank you for giving us an overview of some of the problems that we faced. My question concerns, once we have, I think a couple of them. I think that it's natural to assume that the people that are homeless should, not necessarily do, but should, want to work themselves out of that situation that they find themselves in. But my question, I guess, is that in light of the sympathetic federal judges, et cetera, that, that seem to come down in favor of helping maintain that kind of lifestyle, what do you see, how are we able to monitor and/or encourage those people that have chosen that lifestyle that expect us to keep them warm in winter and feed them and take care of them, but they want absolutely no restrictions, no rules, no anything? I mean, is there some way that you believe we can thin the herd, so to speak, so that they should, everybody, we assume they should be wanting to improve their life, their status in life, but I just have a feeling that there's a certain percentage, maybe 20% or more, that say, just leave me alone. Feed me, clothe me, let me take advantage of all the benefits, but I'm going to stay here and live the way I want to live and I don't want any rules. Is there some way that you believe we can get around enforcing that?
Well, yeah, I mean, if we have enough shelter beds, as we are aware of, we can have a robust enforcement in place. And if you talk to the service providers out there, they're in agreement with that particular setup. And just a side note, you know, when I, when I speak with the service providers, you know, they sometimes don't like what I have to say. Because what I'm saying, what I am sharing with them, and it's happened at this morning's meeting, is that when we consider homelessness in Southern County, we have to consider, again, what's happening with the community and the homeless population. And we've got to create a win-win scenario. In my 25 years of homeless services and the various jurisdictions I've worked in, I have seen numerous win-win scenarios. And personally, I believe in services. I believe in compassion. I also believe that there needs to be guidelines. And so if we have a combination of a services component and ordinances, I think you'll find that, as it relates to homeless services, you'll see a major improvement.
Okay. Any comments?
Well, just maybe a little comment. Scott, thank you for your time. I think because of the Court Act, we have no choice. We've got to move forward with homeless shelter of some sort so we can down the road enforce our no camping ordinance that will have to redraw up. And they will either move on or move on to the homeless service.
And I think that's a, I think that's a fair assessment. And I think that's the overall expectation.
Do you have a comment? We'll let you wrap it up. First, I want to say thank you for your report. Secondly, I remember being here last year talking about homelessness and even though it's a painful subject for everybody, right? You've made a lot of progress. I mean, we've made a lot of progress. I've seen so much activity. I've been involved in those meetings. So there's a lot happening in the background. The time it takes is always frustrating, but I feel like foundationally, we've come to a new place. And it's hard for everyone to see that at the moment as we see an expansion throughout the community of homelessness. But I think with this foundational structure coming about, you know, it seems solid with some of the funding that's coming from outside resources that's not here, with the other resources coming together. There's definitely been a huge improvement since working together with, you know, Yuba County and Marysville and City of Yuba City. The progress in that one-year period, you know, for me, coming from private sector, it's really slow, but watching the progress, you know, at least it's something occurring and it's going in a direction I think is there. What I want to encourage though is, because what I've struggled with is like, understanding what the measurable outcomes will be from those resources so that we have a clear expectation of what, how much it's going to cost, this is what the resource is being utilized, and these are the outcomes we can say to the public and to ourselves that these outcomes occurred so we know that it was worth the investment. Because right now, that's the kind of, I think if you listen to comments, it's challenging to say, well, hey, we keep on bringing this and doing that, but okay, well, wait a minute, what is this specific goal? You know, I mean, you mentioned, you know, changing the paradigm of homelessness. You know, I'm not sure that's everyone's goal and I'm not sure how to, how to measure that, you know? But if you can put that down, it's like, here's how we're going to measure that we actually changed the paradigm of homelessness. You know, that would be a very critical component for us so that we can say that we did make a difference. But I do see the difference. I want to say, you know, being involved is, I know I've been very involved in a lot of those discussions you brought up. And I want to be involved and help make those changes, so, but I appreciate that. But I want to encourage you to look for, you know, set, yeah, measurable recommendations.
Numerical.
Yeah.
And I'll mention very briefly on that, we have a data system that is designed to, to track those measures. And so that process is taking place already. And again, the focus is on rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing and moving focus into that. That's the, that's the expectation.
Thank you. And then Scott, you have a comment?
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Chair, members of the board.
If you don't mind, Nate had a couple of comments.
I was wondering if I can ask a question. I don't know how it works here, like, you know, members of the board.
Go ahead.
So I'm a numbers guy, right? So I just wanted to ask a question of Scott. So if we have, Jim asked the question about the Bi-County area, 800 total. Let's say that Southern County's 400 and let's say of the 250 beds, 125 are the Southern County side, right? 250 total beds, 800 total population or so. I'm just wondering, in terms of implementation, if you have 125 beds for 400 people down at the riverbanks, how do you, how do you say, we have a place for you to go so you can't say no to us? You can't stay here any longer, but at the same time, we don't have enough. In other words, why aren't we seeking 400 beds for 400 people? That, I'm just curious about that.
Want to answer that, Scott?
Yeah, I don't think there's any way that it tends to be, it would be nice to have 1,000 beds available. You know, economically, that's just not feasible. Within this, the homeless, the homeless population is very unique in that they, there are patterns to accessing services. And it's not going to be a scenario where, I mean, there might be some that choose to move on. But even if we have services available and ordinances, there are going to be some that are not going to access, access services immediately. So I think a good baseline number is that 250. If we had, if we had more than that, it would be much better. But, you know, the reality is, I think that's the number we can get to and you can consider all the different factors.
All right, thank you. Scott Gibson.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, to wrap this up. I would like to thank Scott Furman and his staff. They're a great, they're a great partner and they're providing a good regional perspective. So we're working very well with other local governments. So a few wrap-up comments here. So this homeless issue is perhaps Yuba City and Southern County's greatest challenge. And it's a situation that is, the numbers are rising and the impacts of homelessness are going to be greater and greater. How many meetings have we been in with potential developers, for example, business people, property owners? And many of them are sort of giving up. So we owe it to them to turn the tide and make it an attractive place to invest. So we're working very hard. That's why it's been our top priorities. That's why we're talking about it today. And it's a challenge. We also are suffering from the lack of redevelopment agencies. When redevelopment agencies did a good job historically in producing affordable housing. So that's a challenge for us. We're trying to backfill those dollars, make this work. We're moving. We are making progress. We're getting there. The Citizens Committee has been outstanding, even though they don't meet on a regular basis. There's still email communication and the sharing of ideas has been outstanding. So they've done a really good job with that. So the question about the housing units, it's a combination of temporary and permanent housing units that will be necessary to deal with this. We don't necessarily have to provide housing to cover all those that are homeless because it's at a point in time when there are homeless that will need help. We don't want to be in the business of having to have housing people for their entire lives. We're looking at sort of getting them off the streets and getting them to transition to something better. So we'll know the sweet spot once we get to it, but we just don't know how many we have to build. We'll start slowly and see where we go. Remember, we are very concerned that we'll get in over our heads and we can't handle it. So we're going to go incrementally, a little bit, and see what we can do. There's a closed session tomorrow at the beginning of our board meeting dealing with the lawsuit issue. Both Yuba City and Southern County have lawsuits against us over this issue. So we're going to provide the board an update where we are and how that's moving forward. And then on 9/11, we'll have the update on the long-term homeless management plan as well as the temporary shelter location site that we heard about. And then finally, we will be more than happy to provide performance measures and metrics and regular reports to the board, maybe quarterly, or we can do it monthly. We'll do that and we'll work on having the metrics that make sense to you and the public. We'd be happy to put it on our webpage so the public can track it as well. So if you'd like, we can have Neil Hay come up and do the facilities or we can take a break. His report will be 10 minutes or less, so he'll go pretty quickly.
Let's do the facilities.
Okay, and then we can break for lunch at that point?
Perfect.
So Neil?
Okay, so I'll get started. Neil from Development Services is here to talk a little bit about county facilities. So the package in front of you and the presentation essentially tries to address some of our existing facilities. So what I did is in conjunction with General Services, Maiden and Ken and Hushap, Development Services, we worked together and obviously I went through their list of spreadsheet of all the county facilities that they essentially have to maintain and provide services at, whether it be building, landscaping, obviously the computers and the network for IT services. And I know everybody talks about the 30 facilities. My count was that there actually was 40 sites for those county facilities. Doesn't include boat launches, doesn't include parks, but actually places where we have structures. Total is just under 400,000 square feet. So then the kind of the big groups and a little bit of the campus concept. Health and Human Services has about 15 sites at 140,000 square feet. General Government has 20 sites at 150,000 square feet. And then Law and Justice has five sites, totally just under 100,000 square feet. So the numbers. So as far as, I know there's been a lot of talk about essentially facility consolidation in an effort to try to streamline the operations of the facilities, improve services to our customers so they can come to fewer locations in order to have their needs met. And it certainly would reduce the county's operational costs. So for the consolidation, there's matters such as identifying potential property, financial analysis as to how we would pay for it, then proceeding with property acquisition, and then certainly the improvements of the sites. So some of the steps towards consolidation that have taken place is certainly first and foremost, 850 Perry Avenue. So the county obviously has bought the lease for the site. There's an existing building there, 84,000 square feet. Your board has awarded a design contract of just over a million dollars to an architectural firm that's meeting and working with the Health and Human, Health and Human Services staff, permanently with Nancy and her team in an effort to identify the amount of space that every department would need and division to relocate in. One of the big challenges that happens, I think you've heard about our building facility group that meets. It's a group of facility department heads and some reps from the CEO's office, is that we are reliant on the existing square footages that General Services keeps for all the various departments. And what we come to find out is that most of the departments are crammed into existing buildings. So that when we then hire an architect in an effort to try to relocate them to somewhere else, we find out that in order to properly service the employees of the county and have the right space available, in order to service the customers, we need more space than we currently have. For example, we awarded a design contract to a firm, Hickles, Melborgen, Roseron of Chico, to design space ideally to relocate the district attorney in Herschel. She's currently at 8,000 square feet and she's going to need closer to 14,000 square feet. And that is in an effort, that's not really overly growing staff, that's in order to be able to conduct her operations and try to consolidate some of her staff that's actually spread in three different locations. So the effort and energy to try to, you know, hire consultants, and that's why we're moving with the facility master plan, is to try to begin to identify the sites and where we would put staff. So as the Health and Human Services staff have gone through 850 Gray, we've identified the space there, the 84,000 square feet, and what parts of health that could be relocated there. And the design is progressing. You're probably all aware of 680 North Walton. I believe some of you attended it. So that's a site that essentially was an opportunity to relocate some of the Health and Human Services staff from Property Long Garden Highway to 680 North Walton, which is at the intersection of Ridge and Walton. 17,000 square feet. They have essentially room for about almost 80 employees. I've got an aerial or a picture of it here later that I'll show you. But that was just an effort because, one of the reasons you'll see is that, so health seems to be kind of the driving force in the county's facility needs and demands with the states that they have to offer or require in order to service their clients. As far as financial analysis, we've awarded two contracts, one to the Cosmont group, but one to K&amp;N Public Finance. So Cosmont essentially performed their work earlier, kind of as the feed into and feed information to the building group, so that we have some idea of land use and essentially also to validate the county's assumptions and some of the proposed actions that we were taking. And then that's led us to meet with K&amp;N Public Finance. And they essentially are looking at the county's financials. They've had conversations with the CEO's office, with the Order of Controllers' office, in order to look at, and I'll say Health and Human Services, in order to be able to look at what potential funding and financing is available to accomplish a plan to consolidate. I guess I get to be the lucky one that normally comes before you to ask for money to do projects. And so it's always a matter of where's that money going to come from. So K&amp;N has a very pivotal role in the sequence of events in that they're, like I say, studying our financials and where we can go in the future. As far as acquisition, you're aware of the 850 Gray Avenue lease that's been acquired. You're also aware of the 680 North Walton lease that's been acquired. There's other, you know, I'll say properties that have been identified by the facility group that are being considered and which lead us into having the Facility Master Plan that will be developed and will come before your board in late September in order to award a contract. As far as, as far as some sites that we've had improvements, we've got the Main Jail expansion, which that project started in June of 2017 construction. It should finish up by ideally January of 19, and the sheriff should take possession of all the area by March of 2019. A picture will show. The 1160 Civic Center building 10 improvements, so that project has been completed and is in operation. The 680 North Walton 10 improvements. So essentially, that project, 17,000 square feet, about $1.3 million, done in about two and a half months through extensive coordination by General Services, both their IT department and their facility division in order to line up the contractors and significant coordination also with the state agencies that provide computer networking to their department. And that was, I believe, one of the first uses now of the microwave technology that's being implemented for county facilities as a way to kind of streamline some of the communications and make it more reliable. The 1445 Veterans Memorial Drive 10 improvements is being designed, as I mentioned. And then currently, we have a contract for the 850 Gray Avenue Hazardous Material Abatement. So as part of that project, your board awarded a contract just under $300,000 because we're having all of the ceiling tiles removed, and we're having all the floor tiles removed and doing some selective demolition in order to get the project ready for when we do begin construction, once the design is complete. So just to give you a broad picture, so this is an asymmetry view of the sheriff's main jail. Essentially, the roofs that are shaded, the lighter color, those are the areas that are being added. On the left, the lower left, is the kitchen expansion. Then in the middle is the new medical area. And then the other two areas are the men's and women's housing units. This is a floor plan of 680 North Walton, so this took, this is the second floor, 8,500 square feet. That essentially, Health and Human Services worked extensively in order to try to work out a cubicle scenario in addition to new perimeter offices for their staff. And they made very effective, very efficient use of the space. And it was, I'll say, delivered and occupied on time. And it was a very aggressive schedule, but it did happen before June of 2018. And then finally, this is an aerial of the 850 Gray Avenue site that shows the building in green is the 84,000 square feet that's been acquired. And then the shaded orange portion is the lease that has been acquired by the county for the property. And then I spoke a little bit about the Facility Master Plan. So the scope of the work is going to be to have an architectural firm meet with all the county departments that possibly could relocate in about five years or so. Typically, Facility Master Plans are updated every five years. So that, we're trying to be somewhat modest in our projections. And then additionally, it will rely heavily on the county's potential to fund the acquisitions, the design, and the construction. And by doing so, then that will allow us to exceed the plan.
So is any questions?
Nine and a half minutes. Now, any questions from the board? So I just want to make a comment, say, great job on getting, moving on these things. I know it's been years of discussion on how to bring the facilities together. And again, it's sort of like, for me, a homelessness thing is sort of like the frustration of the time it takes. But I understand you have to get all the foundational pieces together, the funding and how it all works. Is there a projection now, in terms of like 10 years from now, what you could think? We have 40 facilities now. Is there a projection that possibly we're going to have 20 or 10?
I think the master plan is going to definitely, you know, bring that about to some degree. I guess I would caution you, so I've read some of the other counties' past facility plans. And our county has the habit of starting a plan and never following it.
Yes.
And I think that's, you know, challenging. I mean, we're not the only jurisdiction that has those issues. But I guess that's why, I think it's great to have short-range and then maybe long-range plans. And that's why typically they revisit every five years in order to try to stay on track. And hopefully, the financing and funding opportunities improve.
And then Walton was done in two and a half months?
Yeah.
Congratulations on that. Really good work on their quiz part. So you multiply that square footage to the 850 Gray, should give or take estimate a move-in date, possibly?
Frankly, it will depend on funding and financing.
Next year, this year?
Not this year. The design hopefully should be complete by the end of this year.
Okay, all right. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thanks for your presentation. Appreciate it. We're going to take 30 minutes for lunch. Enjoy lunch, and then we'll come back here at 12:45. Keep an eye on it.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we're now going to get into the meat of the agenda. So we're at the point now where we're going into item number three, the county, proposed county-wide mission statement. And the new customer service philosophy goals, priorities, et cetera. So as mentioned at the beginning, the county does not have a mission statement. Typically, an organization with 1,000 people will have one. So we don't have one. And one of our priorities, one of the priorities from the board, part of the priority was to come up with a mission statement. So we've got one here that we're throwing out for starters. And you'll see, if you go into a municipality, private corporation, nonprofit, a hospital, you'll see a mission statement on the wall. Some of our departments have mission statements. Some are very complicated. Some are wrong sentences. They can have 10, 12 rows of information. And they'll talk about being open, transparent, progressive, cutting-edge, et cetera, providing excellent customer service, that type of thing. So in stat work, what should we suggest to the board and based on some input you have provided? It really comes down to just a few words. So what's recommended is to provide exemplary county-wide public services to a diverse array of residents, businesses, and visitors. We have a large, complex organization, 21 units. We do a whole array of services. It's hard to find one mission statement that can cover everything. The underlying common thread is to try to be exemplary to respect the services provided. So this is a starting point, and it's the board's pleasure. And if you're not comfortable, you can hold off and come back and do this at another time. So it's up to the board.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm reminded of that commercial that we're constantly seeing on TV these days, where the guy stands up in behalf of the hotel chain and says, "Daboo." How about more for less?
It's up to the board.
More for less.
Who came up with this mission statement?
In our office.
So just your office?
I sent out, I talked to the E-team. I reminded them. I gave everybody a chance to come in with a suggestion, so we did get some.
So this is, tell me that the E-team had input? Who else had input?
That's not it.
So this is just a starting point.
From my perspective, I mean, I don't think it's a bad mission statement. Just when you're trying to move a lot of people in a certain direction, I'd kind of like to see some of our employees have buy-in, you know? And just be able to say, maybe I can come up with a better mission statement as an employee. And a lot of those employees have input. What I should say is that, as an organization, we have, what, 850, 900 employees? And so, you know, the E-team obviously is a good spot. I don't think it's high, but it also is important that we can have buy-in for that. Saying, yeah, this is us. This is who we are.
We can certainly start with this, and there's no hurry here. We can slow it down and we can work with the departments to get it out to the employees, get their input, have some discussion about it, find them, and come back.
Interesting, I'll take is, you know, your E-team department head has elected officials to go out. But then there's prospective, you know, units and say, you know, what do you think? Can we get some more input, some buy-in? Does anybody have any other suggestions? Any other questions? Mine is just, so just, I guess, sort of along the lines of supervisor wicker, just in terms of the process for the establishment of a mission statement. Just on some of the other boards I've worked on from that experience, I can just relay that, you know, we've worked at the same time on our vision statement and our values. And I know that we're working on priorities and norms. But I remember it sort of being blended when we worked. Like, we set a vision first, and then we said, from that vision, what's our overall mission? And then from that, what is our set of core values that we all agree upon? And it's, it kind of blends that way because when you're establishing feedback from employees and from the leadership team and possibly even members of the public that support, you know, the development of a mission statement, then you can say, well, what does that vision statement, the mission, the values that it took to accomplish? I mean, I think you're covering what the county does. And to supervisor Sol, you're planning, maybe you could use a, provide exemplary, you know, cost-effective county-wide public services. You could add that. But I mean, just, I think getting that input can be really helpful. But I don't, but a matter of process, was there thought of that vision coming later or value? I know core values are a big deal.
We are totally.
We never talked about, I know.
It's up to the board. This is just to get you started thinking about the overall mission or vision or values. So this is not, I'm not sure if it's a common one, size of law, or totally a size of law.
I guess, I'm just assuming the board, like you said, that we could establish a vision, values, and mission at the same time. Is that common?
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
I think it's a good start, Scott. I can't believe that Sutter County around, one of the original counties, we don't have a mission statement. I guess we've never had one. Can't believe that we've never had one all those years. But I think it's a good start. I think we have such a wide, diverse depth of services, including fire, sheriff's department, jail, welfare, libraries, museums, on and on around. Somewhere along, I'm going to talk a little more about diverse group of services that we provide too.
So just a matter of clarification on that, too. I remember about three years ago establishing a mission statement. So what?
That was, you did that in 2016. That was not so much for the organization, it's more about, it had to do with economic development, I remember, right? Somebody have that?
I thought it was people. Yeah, but I was wondering what happened to that mission statement?
Right, that's on the website. It was promoting, it did involve promoting economic development, I remember. We can certainly incorporate that in. We did look at that, and I'm sorry you don't have that in your text.
Because there was, there was a visiting process, like in 2016.
That was part of your process in what you're looking for in a county administrator?
That's right.
The job description, and I can visualize it in my head, so I don't have it here, reminding that pile over there. But this is good. So we get, we have some clarity. You're interested in having the vision, the core values, and the mission, and getting input from the employees.
Yeah, I mean, definitely examining the mission. I'm pretty sure, I'll have to go back and check what we adopted, but I'm pretty sure we adopted that as a mission statement. So I think we need to look at, maybe we haven't used it since then, but we need to go back and say, okay, this is the mission statement. And maybe we need to tweak it. Yeah, sure. That would be.
We have a little bit more clarity?
Yeah.
And we can certainly come back and do this. There's no hurry. But once we get to the point where you're comfortable with a vision, missions, whatever it's labeled, then we will put that on our agendas, our documents, and so it stays with the organization.
Well, I see those as two. Maybe you can help me clarify this one. But, you know, there's always a vision separate from the mission.
Right.
Establish core values that.
Different organizations approach it, depending on whether they want the vision, mission, and core values. Sometimes it's just the mission, sometimes it's the vision. But I wanted to go back to the question you asked earlier. I remember when I first started working with each of you to do the interviews, I used that information that you came up with when you were putting together different ideas about what you wanted to be as a county, what was important to you. And then I used that information to start framing the questions when I interviewed each of you early on. And so in my mind, I remember it being a guiding document to help start moving the organization forward, what you were looking for, what you wanted from your leadership. But I don't remember it being established as a firm mission statement. It was more of a guiding document when I read it.
So you're right, Mr. Chair. The county does have a vision statement that was done through that process. Sutter County endeavors to promote innovation in business and industry while embracing community-wide collaboration and preserving the integrity of our rich, diverse, and cultural heritage. So that's a vision. Yeah, but does it apply to the organization in terms of how we deliver services and that type of thing? So this is an excellent starting point.
At least foundational.
Yeah, so we'll build from this.
Sounds good. Maybe a combination of both.
There's no right or wrong way. But I will tell you, the dividends are significant once we get to the point of having a streamlined vision and mission statement and customer service philosophy. It's good for the employees. It's good for our image.
Excellent. So I think we're working against a combination of employee feedback and routine.
And then we'll do it again with the board. Sometime down the road, we'll come back and say, okay, here's what we're recommending. And we'll give you advance morning, we'll share with you, and then we'll come back.
Sounds great.
You might feel the same way about this. The next suggestion. In local governments, it's common, not necessarily non-universal, but common to have a customer service philosophy. This is found to be valuable in terms of letting your employees know the importance of customer service. So the one that is suggested, treat all county customers, including residents, businesses, other government agencies, and visitors fairly, objectively, and respectfully, and dignity at all times. It's hard for us, the local government, in that we're not driven in the same way as a private corporation is in terms of, you know, chasing the customer, always making the customer happy. We're going through training. We're learning more how to do that. But this was a starting point, and we would be happy to follow the same lead, the direction you just gave us on this, and roll it in with a vision, a mission statement, if you like. We're going through training, we're learning more how to do that. But this was a starting point, and we would be happy to follow the same, the same lead, the direction this gave us on this and roll it in with a vision and mission statement if you like.
Thoughts from the board?
As a merchant in this community for thirty-plus years, it was pretty simple to me, you say to your boy, you treat the people that walk through this door the same way you yourself would like to be treated. Pretty simple.
Agreed. There's no disagreement. But it helps to have reinforcement of that, and we set the mechanisms, have value, work toward that goal. So, okay?
Yep. Any other comments? Yeah, that sounds good. Just tie it into what.
All right, sorry for the small print. So now we're going to check, we're talking about the goals. The bottom line are ten broad goals, because they're not the priority goals. To get to the punchline here, staff is recommending that we continue the goals as they are. And we move into the priorities. So the goals are broad, and there's ten of A through J, and this is a summary version. The next page has the full, the full text reading of the goals. Here are the first five. Now, these cover the broad areas on all the departments in the organization. The first one, A, provide professional local government leadership. So I don't have metrics for these, we do for the priorities. These are just the underlying statements about the goals of the organization. This is very common. And, and some institutions, especially in the private sector, each goal will have dozens of objectives. And then you hold your department heads or your business unit leaders accountable in achieving those objectives, sort of management by objectives. So if you like, we go through each one, or we can just acknowledge that they're there, we'll continue them for another year, and we can go into the priorities. So it's the board's prerogative, how would you like to go through the goals?
Any comments? Yeah, I think continuation is.
All right, we'll stay now, more time on priorities. So I'll present the priorities quickly in summary format and then in more detail. As a reminder, with priorities, these are policy statements, requirements, that you want to see the organization achieve during the upcoming year. Now, you can have a prior, priority, or if I may, if you could break it out, if you could say, a top priority for this board is to get the health and human services building built and open. Obviously, we can't do that in one year, but you'll put that on there as one of your top priorities, so we have to make progress during that year to get there. So you can have the same subject, it can be on there for multiple years, if it's still a top priority for the board. Last, this week, you had ten of them. There's no magic number, you can have eleven, fifteen. We're going to recommend that you have five. I think in your discussion with Mr. Lopez, felt that there would be more value in having a smaller number of top priorities, focus on that. Now, if an item's not on the top five or ten, it doesn't mean it's not important to the county. Obviously, we have hundreds and hundreds of priorities that we're working on with thousands of employees. But this is what you're telling the community are, are your top items to focus on. Well, I'll just go with the short version. So one through ten, and it's not just by order of importance, although the ones that are higher up, if you see more votes on the board, we put them in there. But we made it clear that item one's not more important than seven or ten. So the first one is prepare a long-term organization strategic plan and employee succession plan. I'll tell you what, I'll go through each one, give you a report card, because you did ask for that. We did give you, I think, around January, mid-year report. I'm sorry, the small, can you do have a copy of this? This is a nine-page document in the report, the report card section. And I'll hit on the highlights. And I will tell you upfront, of the ten top priorities, we did complete and/or had significant progress on six of the ten.
Remember he's a teacher and now I'm just asking, is this a priority or a?
You know what, you know what I'm doing? Is it, I get, as a teacher, I can feel very disconnected. These are our county top ten goals, and yet you were sitting back here, and it's hard to engage you in this setting. So I want everybody to move their seat up all the way closer here, so the board, we can get your input, so we can hear from you as a, as an organizational. This is so much better. See, now you kept being a bad, like I was as a teacher, texting people.
Well, this is, this is great, now.
Now they can hear all my shouting.
Nobody's behind my back.
So just.
You can see better, also, like I said, we can get input from you as.
Everybody's fine.
Well, that was a good audible, Mr.
Thanks.
I like that. Okay, so the first one is, we directed the E-Team to prepare a long-term organization strategic plan, including the mission statement and customer service philosophy and employee succession plan. And so, we did deliver on the mission statement as well, and the customer service philosophy went that direction, and we have to find two men, so we will do that. We were moving along very nicely when we had our HR director on board, come on board in April, or May of 2017, and we did some really good work, and then that person left after about a year. So that got sidetracked, so we're not able to deliver those items at this time, but we're still working on it. We're going to wait for the new HR director to come on board, hopefully a decision will be made this week on that, or next week, and then that person will pick it up. And the new HR staff is continuing to do some work on this, in the interim, as well as staff from the county administrator's office. And that's where we are in that. So this falls under the in-progress category. Any questions? Not one, I'll go on to number two.
Any questions? Any questions? Guys, it's right here. That's great.
Everybody has to pay attention. This is good. Item number two. Priority number two, develop and implement a long-term homeless management plan with measurable target dates and provide quarterly updates. So we've completed this, I believe it was in November, we'll say it there, right, in November seventh. The board did approve a long-term homeless management plan, and it had a number of steps that had to be taken. You also directed, oh, you also established an eleven-member citizens committee, and that committee had a number of meetings. The committee did, as you heard earlier, recommend two sites to look at, and then that was narrowed down to one site. When they did their two sites, the board directed staff to do the necessary due diligence on both sites, continue to work on the management plan, and to work with the committee to further review the staff's due diligence. So then, in July, July twenty-third, we met with the committee, and they recommended a county one site, nineteen sixty-five Library Boulevard site, behavioral health. So like, you got the presentation on that a little while ago. On nine eleven, staff will return to the board with an update on homeless issues, including their recommended site for a temporary homeless shelter. There are a series of other aspects of the homeless management plan that have either been implemented or soon will be implemented. You might remember, we were directed to monitor the Feather River water levels, go forward on removal and trimming of vegetation in river bottom areas, removal of debris, and then work with the area housing forty unit city on their forty or forty-two unit affordable housing development project, Garden Highway, that's a few years out. And so, staff has continued to do that, and we'll get a more detailed update on nine eleven. Are there any questions about that?
Just tell me, how would you want to measure the data?
How would you get a question from Neil? Hey.
So the environmental consultants written the biological reports, and they are applying for the permit from the state park and water, like, wildlife. And what's that?
Problem, yeah.
Pardon?
No, no problem.
No, so we even got, so once we get the permit, then we would go out and begin to see the cost, if we were to go and do the habitat, or the vegetation. And we may depend on the funding, money available, we'll have to decide if we're going to do the entire strategy of just doing things.
And that will have a cost. And that's a general fund, okay?
Yes.
Yep, so that's not cheap, so the board will have to make a decision on what to do when that. Item, so in memory three, and Mr. Hay did provide a good update on this. This is the deal with our facilities. So we were directed, directed to complete a comprehensive to the county one facilities master plan. We fell short on that, but you saw there was a lot of work done with Cosmo Associates, as well as K and N Public Finance. So we made significant progress. Mr. Hay did update you on the various projects that were delineated in that top priority. So that falls under completed and in progress, and we're coming back on. Says here somewhere, we're coming back, what date, Neil?
Nine twenty-five.
On September twenty-fifth. For the more thorough update. We're okay with moving on to item four?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item four is with respect to the Sutter Point specific plant. So the direction was ensure compliance with Sutter Point specific plant and related environmental requirements when development commences. That falls under completed and in progress. We've actually done a lot. So the interesting thing about Sutter Point is, we don't come in front of the board too often with Sutter Point items, but there's a lot of work taking place behind the scenes. I mean, every week, there's a lot, essentially, when you're building a new community that could hit upwards of fifty thousand population over a thirty-year period, you don't just say, go do it. There's a lot of groundwork that takes years, actually decades. So this last year, this last fiscal year was a busy one, and we delineate some of the milestones that were achieved. And more recently, on June twelfth, the board did approve hiring an outside consultant, Carol Shirley, who's got a ton of experience, former planning director of Sacramento City. She pretty much did the coordination and worked on the Atomas specific plant. So she brings excellent direct experience to this issue, because we're also part of the Atomas Basin Conservancy. So she's a, she's been a pleasure to work with, very helpful to Neil and his staff. And we have regular meetings. We're now getting property owners, developers that are close to the pre-app process. Their frustration is we don't have turnkey parcels that they can just go build. But we definitely have the interest, especially on the industrial warehouse type of use and employers, large employers. We need large, flat parcels close to the airport. So lots of interest, we're doing quite a bit of work, and now there's interest too, to start with residential subdivisions, so we're working on that. Those are still two, three, four years away. We've got to get the infrastructure in line. And as you noticed, delineated here, we're going to come back to the board shortly to start the process of soliciting proposals from firms to help us with the financing and the environmental infrastructure analysis. Because we'll have to look at how we pay for all of this, and the developers are funding the bills at this point. The last paragraph delineates some of the challenges, whether it's the same gap issue, internal drainage, classic parkway funding agreement, et cetera. So we just keep going on that. We have regular meetings at the staff level. Any questions on that? No. Okay. Item five, so this one falls under completed, and it will move off of our top list of items. This reads, conduct a thorough review of the county's existing marijuana cultivation ordinance and recommend potential revisions and provide a report to the board. So we've done that. Earlier in the year, the board was interested in going forward, exploring, doing a tax measure of some sort, going to the voters, and the staff was working on that. And then it was ultimately decided basically to wait and see, because there were a series of issues that had been raised. Some of our surrounding counties and cities have had some challenges with this, so as that's delineated here, the recommendation is continue to wait and see, see, monitor what's going on, and then it makes sense to come back to this. We'll do so at board's direction. So any clarification, comments on that? Thank you. Priority number six. This reads, and we covered some of that today, starting with the current fiscal year of twenty eighteen, nineteen, or last. Prepare, yeah, for the budget I've had now, prepare a traditional operating and capital improvements program, or CIP budget documents, and the county's first comprehensive annual financial report, CAPR. Prepare a plan to achieve a structurally balanced budget, provide semi-annual reports to the board with respect to the county's pension and OEP liabilities, and submit a proposal to prepare a long-term financial strategic plan. In progress, we hit some of these targets, we're a little behind in others. Think what we did last year, we have these locke, we have goals and priorities, but I'm glad we put them on the list, and I would have liked to have had it a thousand percent, but we ended up having six hundred. So we got six of the ten completely. But we're working on this, and we talked about some of this earlier, earlier. We're working with our order controller to get a CAPR done for this year. A lot of hard work on that, and I appreciate it, but he's indulged us in patience as we go through that. With respect to our budget, it's going to take us a while to get to a structurally balanced budget, but we know we have to get there. And we're coming to the board shortly, I think on September twenty-fifth. Matt Michaelis is leading the charge, he will come to the board with a request to do an RFP, to get firms to submit proposals to guide us in the long-term multi-year financial strategic plan. So that is that update. Does the board have any questions or comments on that? Moving on to priority number seven. This has to do with commercial truck parking issues, I remember, right? Yes. Review the county's land use plans, suggest revisions for areas of Highway ninety-nine, south of U C boundaries, present a proposal for designated area or areas for a truck stop related land use, and conduct an analysis to present options for improved code enforcement of businesses in the uncorporate areas. So I wish we could say completed, but we made a lot of progress. There's been an increase in code enforcement. So we appreciate the board's decision to hire a code enforcement officer not that long ago. This person has inundated with work, as you can imagine, throughout the county. I wish we had the resources to have three or four code enforcement officers. We have the right person at the right time, the right personality doing that job, which she is outstanding. She's had a lot of success with the commercial park, trucks operating issues. We have a long ways to go. The board did back a year ago, you did establish an ad hoc committee with two supervisors to review issues associated with commercial truck parking. That committee has met with the trucking advocates and the residents. You know, out in the community, you're hit all the time. I was up at Jim's this morning, and the resident, I don't know, has impacted significantly, being living next to one of these facilities, was going on and on about concerns. So it, it's out there, and it's not going away. But we made some good progress, and we're coming back to the board. Neil, what's the date we're coming back to the board?
October nine.
October nine. October nine, there it is, I'm sorry. The committee's report for this recommendation, changes to the ordinance, will come back on October nine. This is a very tough issue to consider, it's a careful and delicate balancing act. The fees that have been collected aren't really beyond insignificant, or below insignificant. The Oswald intersection between Neil and, that's a three-million-dollar project, I think we have collected at max forty thousand dollars. So we have to figure out a way, how to pay for the impacts of this industry in the community without causing the industry to go away. So it's a complicated one. In progress, you'll get a more thorough update on October ninth. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Let's move on to priority number eight. This has to do with flood protection, so I'll just read it. Continue to work with the Southern View Flood Control Agency, off of Fort Soubuca, State Department of Water Resources, and local levee and reclamation districts, other government agencies to complete ongoing county-wide levee and. government agencies to complete ongoing countywide levee improvement policies and obtain funding for future levee policies. And work to obtain improved flood protection insurance designation for the federal government or regions of the county with less than one hundred year protection. Completed and in progress. We are blessed to have Sabuka, the leadership there. They're an agency that gets things done. As you know, they've spent over three hundred million dollars in levee improvements in the county. Really benefited the city. Your staff, various supervisors and staff have participated in a large number of meetings with Sabuka, DWR, Levee District One, Levee District Nine, and various other flood protection partners with respect to a variety of capital improvement projects. We still have a ways to go, but we've had successes with the emergency project in protecting the downtown U V City area. That project's done. Sabuka did very good work to obtain some funding for the five mile stretch from Tudor Road to Cypress Road. And they followed up on the lower road issue, the impact of that from the high water event and so on. And they worked with Neil and his staff, so we were able to take care of that issue down there. The challenge now is all the money that was provided in the federal and state governments to do these projects require ongoing maintenance. So levee districts one and nine are struggling with that issue. And they had a series of meetings. It will come in front of the board. If they do a vote, they're going to have to do a vote. And so the board will have to agree to put that on the ballot for these two levee districts to look at, you know, an increase in the yearly property tax bill to cover the maintenance of these levees. It's a difficult issue, but at least it will go to the voters on the main, and the voters will have to decide. If it's not funded, then it's a big question mark, and we lose our eligibility for the federal and state, as I understand the issue. So we're working very closely with our partner on that. So we mark that as completed and in progress. Any questions? Thank you. Priority number nine. This has to do with communication with our residents and our businesses. We were directed to improve the county's website, better use of social media to allow for more user-friendly interaction, and to provide employee training with respect to customer service, civic engagement, et cetera, and to do a community survey. So completed and in progress. We haven't done that community survey. We still have the money for that, and we'll visit that when we're ready. We have to take some baby steps before we jump in and do that. We do have to continue the improvements of social media, better on the board. Totally aware, we had the Sutter View fire incident, the View's fire incident. We didn't do as good a job as we should have for you in how we communicated with the community and with each of you. We did a good job managing the fire and taking care of that, but we recognize we have a little ways to go. But that's good. This is good. And we're in the process of purchasing a system to help get the word out. So we've done a good job, but we need to do a better job. And we have participated in, here's where we've excelled though, and Chuck has done a good job with this. In terms of participating and getting positive stories out there, the radio interviews, each of you append at least one or two offhand pieces articulating services provided by the county and some of the issues that we do, we'll continue to do that. We have the annual state of the county address, and we're going to talk to the chair about expanding that, maybe doing a more traditional approach to that. We can talk more about that later. And we'll keep working on upgrading our website, more on social media. And we've done a fair amount of customer service training with our employees, and we'll keep going. So we've done, really, I feel we've done a really good job, but I was a little bit critical at the beginning, I think it's because of that fire incident, realizing we could have done a little bit better. Okay, so that is that one. Any questions or comments?
We're going to have a class quiz after. End of candy.
Tomorrow's eighteen, we'll have. All right, priority ten. This one is in progress, and we're going to move on from that one to the board. So agrees, that's, we've all, all outstanding, southern county, airport land use issues. I don't think we'll ever solve all those issues, but we have more clarity. We were able to identify with the board, the actual acreage, true omens, what the history has been, and why, and how did we get to where we are with the FAA. And we're striving to obtain land releases for a variety of properties that the county has facilities on. And the only way to do that is you buy it at its appraised value, or you pay rent payments. So we're going to wait and see on this situation and just move forward. Yeah, no further actions necessary at this point. So on the last page, you just give the map of the ten priorities. Six are sixty percent fall under completed or completed and in progress, and four, forty percent were just in progress. I think the main point here is we didn't neglect any of these. We did our level best on them. Could we have done better? Yes. But that's the point of having the priorities, have lockheed priorities, aim high, do the best we can with them.
So if you were in college, you got sixty percent on your test.
We grade on curve, I was going to say that. Now, baseball, Mr. Whitaker, you got six hundred percent here in the hall of hands. You know, we could have structured this, I could have told you we were about ninety percent down there, you know, we could have structured it anyway. The reality is we made a lot of progress, and I'm proud of these men and women here for their leadership, and we've delivered on much of the stuff that's in front of you. Could we have done better? Sure. But remember, with management by objectives, this can't be the live all, be all. You give us this top ten things, you know, stuff happens, right? You've had a lot of drama as an organization. Stuff happens, you get distracted, you have fires, you have high water events, you have unexpected retirements or whatever. But to be progressive and to be a high-performance organization, do better, you've got to have some objectives and standards, priorities. That's why we do this. And then you hold me accountable, and you do my annual review, and I hold the department's accountable, as we do theirs, through these priorities and goals. So that's the report card. So I guess the goal next year will come back at sixty-five percent higher.
I'd tell you right now, it's going to be a lot higher. You're only doing top five priorities.
That's right.
Not doing top ten. And no longer is that, I'm pretty sure you're going to be a hundred percent. That's the goal, right?
That's the goal. And remember, these are your priorities, you have to be comfortable with it. So now we're going to shift and talk about the next fiscal year.
Let me just find, I would like to make a quick comment. So I'd like to say first, thanks for that report, percentage-wise, always room for proof of course, but I did want to commend all the people here for your involvement in getting these goals and priorities together, especially over the last year and over the last several years that you've worked here. I just, you know, we couldn't do it without the employees and you guys. You guys are the ones who make it happen. And I just want to take a moment, you know, we don't do that enough, and we need to do that. I really want to recognize the hard work that you do, and thank you for taking the direction and moving things forward, making things work out, because you're the ones who make it happen every day. Instead of here, work with you on the goals, but you're the ones who make it happen. So I just want to say thank you for that. Maybe more, we could give a round of applause for working on. It's so weird being so close to you doing this. I just want to reach out, give my. We have no calls. Yeah, no, no calls. Okay, anyway, I just want to take that moment. I really appreciate the work you did with this. Between this, there's always the drama, the things going on in the county, we hear all different things, but at the end of the day, driving towards those goals and making it work, and things are really happening in a very positive direction, and it's great to see. But that's my day.
Wow, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Can we leave now? No.
So we gave you the report card, and that was a focus on staff. So now we're going to shift it back to focus on the board. So the five of you were asked to submit your top priority, excuse me, priority of the beef where they currently, this is where they just started. And it, there was a variety of them. So this document, which is hard to read on the screen there, but it's in front of you, I tried to list literally everything you had stated. So when you see there's seven of them, and then what happened is these seven fell in seven categories, from leadership, budget finance, facilities, homelessness, Sutter Point, civic engagement, general plan. So I tried to put it out there and make sure we included everything that you listed. So under, I'll start with, I'll go from top to bottom, and these reflect by number of votes, if you will. So leadership, all five of you had listed specific things that deal with leadership and vision, from setting efficiency goals in terms of staffing levels, to the use of dashboards to include expectations and outcomes, succession planning, filling vacant department head positions, creating a vision for the county, develop an organizational strategic plan, develop a mission statement, improve the relationship with U V City, develop a cohesive executive team and cooperation between departments. That all, in general speaking, falls under the leadership category. The next category, number two, is budget slash finance, and listed things such as achieve a strategically balanced budget, develop a long-term financial strategic plan, including approach to managing long-term pension and health insurance obligations, financial stability, unfunded pension liability, find a solution to unfund the liability, cut the budget by five percent, no cuts to health, welfare, fire, and sheriff, reduce overall spending, overall budget by five to ten percent, return to the five-day work week or office hours, in other words, eliminate the nine eighty program and four-ten program, increase public safety salaries, keep southern county fiscally sound, develop a comprehensive plan to increase general fund reserves, Sutter County negotiations, privatize services where possible, work with U V City on improving the master tax exchange agreement, set up a joint revenue measure for city slash county in 2020, and set up a centralized finance department. So there's a lot there. But all five of you weighed in on those issues, and we felt that would fall under budget finance. The third item is facilities. So four of the five of you listed priorities dealing with facilities, ranging from complete the countywide facilities master plan, consolidate city departments into fewer locations, get eight fifty gray avenue up and running, remove square footage to add new square footage, I like that, get rid of old buildings that cost too much. And there were some other comments. Next category, number four, three of you commented specifically on homelessness. Do you want to make any comments on any of the above ones? Okay. So homelessness, here's some of the comments you had. Implement long-term homeless management plan, no general fund impacts, reduce the number of homeless, and continue to develop long-term solutions. The fifth category, which received two comments, involved Sutter Point specific plants. One of you wrote, "Begin construction." Another, "Move forward on Sutter Point, commercial and industrial development at the same time as residential." And item six and seven, one dealt with civic engagement, continue to remind voters why they need to know their supervisor and county interest, one giving a general plan update, begin the process. So then the question is, all right, how do you go from there?
Well, there's their own comments. First, all the comments during that portion.
For me, I think it's important that people know exactly what my top five were, because I mean, for an organization, maybe it's important that when we're looking at the organization as a whole, that we take care of the needs of the organization first, and then we go left with the outside interests of the public. So I will tell you my top five priorities. For me, it was my first top priority, my first priority was serving the county employee negotiations. We don't take care of our employees, all right? To our pleasure, Munger can attest to this as well. And we lose employees to other counties. We will lose, we become a training ground for other counties. And that's something I just don't want to do. I don't want to go back to the days of the sheriff down there saying, "He can't feel twelve deadly share conditions because, you know, our salaries and our benefits are not comparable to whatever the county should have received." So it's important that we take care of our employees and our units, and making sure that they are fairly compensated and that we can obtain quality employees. So that was my first top five priority. My second one is to obviously develop an organizational strategic plan, emphasis on mission statement, discussed that enough. I won't say it for the discussion. Third was to work to develop a comprehensive plan to increase Sutter County general fund reserves. And honestly, you folks know that healthy reserves and healthy budget means that we are able to operate different programs. And so, but right now, it always seems like we're status quo. We have to be able to find ways, innovative ways, and one of those are, is if we're new, finding ways that we can grow as a county and increase those general fund reserves. So we have money in our coffers to implement programs to go outside and create innovative projects that can be used in this area. Number four is complete consolidation of public unit services and good gray avenue facility. I mean, Neil pretty much touched on this as much as that, you know, we have to consolidate different departments and look, and obviously that gray avenue facility will accommodate a big portion of that. That has got to be a priority for us now to get that figured out. And then work on other avenues of consolidating different departments as well. My fifth is just to work with the city of U V City on creating the master tax exchange agreement. I think that U V City is receptive to doing this stuff, but I think that we have to sit down at the table with the counterparts and work on, work the other, I take those, future annotations, make sure that we are at the table and that we are supporting not only the city, but the county and city that are looking to make that happen. That was my top five priorities. Thank you, city of U V City. Appreciate that. Any further comments?
Okay, so then the question is, how do you go from that to having a set of top priorities? I also did ask the department heads to submit what they would consider to be their top priorities without seeing anything from the board, and they're barely in line. They had some other suggestions that were really, really dynamite. So what I did is, okay, the board's made it clear with these first five, these are your priority areas. So we're going to have five, leadership, budget finance, facilities, homelessness, and Sutter Point. So if you go to the next page. So right here, this is what we're recommending for a starting point for your discussion. So under leadership, here's the suggested language. Complete long-term organization strategic plan of the organization. Complete employee succession plan, strengthen the executive team, improve employee morale, and develop formal performance benchmarks, dashboard metrics. At this point, I'd ask the board, what do you think of that? Should we, do you want to go through all these and come back, or do you want to?
Sure. Yeah, I think it's a better view.
Okay, then you get the bigger picture and decide which one you prefer. So under budget financing, three is follows. Select consultant to prepare long-term financial strategic plan. You know what? Why don't I strike select consultant, because that's a good, we can just say, prepare, prepare long-term financial strategic plan, including a plan to achieve a structurally balanced general fund budget, prepare GFOA and CSMFO award-winning fiscal year nineteen twenty countywide operating and capital improvement plan budget documents, complete review and convert, sorry, and convert to a biennial two-year budget process, prepare comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year eighteen nineteen, and provide semi-annual pension and OPEC liabilities reports. Three, under facilities, let's take out buyer consultant, just simply start with, complete countywide facilities master plan, resolve ownership issue, and complete architectural design of eight fifty gray avenue, complete jail expansion project, and work with other U V, Sutter, local governments to develop a proposal to consolidate public safety dispatch. On that one, several of you keep mentioning the dispatch issue, so I want to be respectful to that and not, don't like that unless you direct us to it. And there's mixed, as we said in the report card. And there's mixed, as we said in the report card, some agencies are supportive of this, some aren't. So there's a mixed review, a mixed bag out there, but we recommend that you wait until the new sheriff or both, the two new sheriffs come on board. From January and then see what their interest is and go forward from there if there's any interest to do that. Okay, then moving forward to that number four, homelessness. Implement long-term homeless management plan. Decide location, configuration and initial services associated with a temporary shelter facility. And work with other UCA City, or sorry, UCA Sutter agencies to develop a permanent long-term shelter. Fifth, the Sutter Point specific plan item. Continue to work with propingers and developers to process residential, industrial and commercial development applications. Hire an outside counsel, so you know, so let's strike that and just simply write. Prepare comprehensive financial, environmental and public infrastructure analysis to ensure quality development takes place. And work with applicable outside agencies as part of the due diligence process. I didn't take out the reference to consultants, it's not necessary, we just have to do that task and how we get their letters in house or consultant, we'll deal with that. So what do you think and how do you want to make revisions? What I did is, like, several of these department heads provided their list and then I incorporated their suggestions in with yours, but we're not overriding, these are your priorities.
This is input, oh.
Yes, for sure.
No, I was just saying, how come you didn't put the numbers behind each of the post?
Well, they're your priorities.
That's what I'm saying, these are our priorities or these are each's priorities?
Well, these are the board's priorities.
The E-team have input on given priorities.
They did.
This is it?
No, what we did is, we took the priorities that came from the board and then I incorporated the applicable ones from the E-team. That tied in to the ones that you said are your priorities. They had other things out there that are not part of this.
Yeah, and that's why it was separate.
It's board prerogative how you want to get to your priorities.
I understand that this is, these are the top five of the board priorities. As an organization, I would just like to see and have a total buy-in, I'd like to see what the E-team's priorities.
Are those in here or are they?
They're incorporated, but they're not, it's not a hundred percent.
Okay, you don't have to do it right now, I just said it at a certain time.
Right, yeah, I can share with you, what I can do is a separate follow-up, is I can have a list and you can see there.
Yeah, and you don't have to have a separate meeting, we're just, you can send it to the board and say, give me the E-team's priorities.
I'll do that.
You said most, they're pretty much in line, but it would be.
Yeah, they're, for example, I'll, not to pick on anybody, but your museum director and library director had some suggestions that aren't on here. But they're very good, but they involved sort of their stuff. But what I could do is, I think it'd be excellent so you can see, I'll just delineate them all without saying who did what and then you'll see that. And if I can interject on that, just because items don't work their way on here, there's still priority for us to implement.
Yeah, but I think it's a good, very good suggestion, but rather, that way we can also see the priorities from the E-team and what they're working at altogether. If you have it incorporated, it would be always good for us to see the whole list.
Happy to do that. Happy to do that.
Well, it's, it was done, I think it's just some comments. I think incorporating, it gives what our department heads are thinking, if they're in the same line or if there's something we're missing. I'd like to see if we're missing something, but I'd see if all of this is, we're doing it, we might as well do it and make sure incorporate it all.
Yeah, okay.
Here, you go, soldier, any comments?
No, I just agree that, you know, many hands make light work, as they say, but again, the more input we can get on some of these. Difficult management decisions involved, especially in the world of finances, I'm sure Mr. Minnick will tell you. It's nice to have goals and say, we want to do this. The financial constraints perhaps limit that, so it's good so that everyone understands it's not always talking from a real block checkbook. Today's checkbook is borderline red.
I'd like to, I think it's safe to say, because you have to come up with your top five, top ten or whatever the number is. What the department heads suggested, they are incorporated in this.
Okay.
Remember, we're very limited in the number and space, so if we were to grow this list, it'd be back to having ten or more. I think what you, I know what you have in front of you reflects the very top priorities of the organization. And then when we come back for adoption of that formally, happy to have a list of what the department heads came up with, so you can see that at the same time.
I think you hit the nail on the head, it's like, if you know it doesn't make a list, it doesn't mean it's not a priority organization.
Yeah.
Just like you gave the example of the library and museum, you know, I want to make sure that those, as a board, that we get to see those. Because, you know, when we're looking at different things, funding and those come up, it's like, hey, wait, let's put a priority back in the 1920s ago.
Right.
We can fund these things, so.
Right, like, for example, some of them are make better use of technology. A lot of these rule right in actually, a lot of them really rule in, but I wanted to be fair to the men and women here, I'm not gonna say a hundred percent what they recommended is in there, but they're very close. I think one of Jessica's was to incorporate what other departments are doing as it relates to museum, library, bike parks promoting quality of life issues. Obviously, those are important, very important. So I think we can achieve all the objectives when we do our report back to you, and you'll see.
Okay, so, I have a couple of comments there. First of all, that's pretty good being able to move those over, because I was looking at this list at first and seven, thinking, oh my gosh, how do you get all of those into one, you know, into five priorities? But I think that's a good method to take, you know, five major categories and then place some categories under. And I think they're more achievable than saying, hey, here's a specific priority that's really hard to tackle. My question is more on execution, because I want to come back and get a hundred percent, I don't want to come back and get the sixty percent right now. So.
I'll bill you right now.
Yes, you'll be able to, but, you know, we want to come back with a high grade next year. And one suggestion I have is, this comes from working with another board that you might be familiar with, I sit on the Sutter Health Board, which has seventy-five thousand employees and, you know, massive amounts of assets and things. But one of the things they do very effectively is that they have their sets of goals and priorities in place and they have a executive committee. So like, if you took number one, the leadership, and under the executive committee is typically made up of the CAO, in our case possibly legal counsel. Couple of supervisors, it could be anybody, and then maybe a couple of other leaders on the executive team that would help assure that we proceed, especially with that category. You know, a lot of these things that you look at and they were carry on from, these were some of the ones that weren't completed, like dashboard objectives and things like that. So if we had an executive committee, I don't know if the board would be interested in having something like that, but I, I think it'd be really helpful in making sure that we're proceeding. So that we don't show up next year and say, hey, we missed out on that, instead we're proceeding together and we can see that. And the other is in the area of the budget and finance. And I know we've talked about this in the past too, the consideration of actually setting up a budget finance committee. So again, this would be a couple of members of the board and then financial leaders, you know, financial officers from the county. Who would then be, go over, because you have some very tough priorities coming with the CAFR, the budget issues, the, you know, the employees. All of this stuff that could be incorporated within budget and finance, but having it without some sort of committee oversight. The opportunity to actually accomplish those is going to be really challenging without bringing it back to say, hey, this committee is never responsible to make sure that these things, these objectives are met. So I don't know, I don't know how the board feels about it, but, you know, those two, I know we have a lot of committees already, but these are like really critical to the operations of any organization or business. Again, I'm just using my own experience with a much larger organization, but it's very, very effective in terms of getting communication through and meeting objectives. Because you can set those objectives, those are just a couple of suggestions, but I like the way you wrapped it into this.
Would you like to, from a staff perspective, that'd be great, because it would be a good sounding word for us.
I agree with you, yeah.
So I could incorporate that in at the end of both of those, establish and, again, using an executive committee and a budget finance committee. Or with a clerk's office to set that up the correct way?
Yeah, that would be great, I think will really help with the execution implementation of a lot of these things, so we're not coming back later, maybe we can get this done, so.
Okay.
I would, I guess humbly request that you consider trying to strike and reduce some of the items, because I'll say for five priorities, it's probably supposed to be about thirty action items. And I'll say, at least speaking for myself and maybe for some of the other department heads, I think that probably as department heads, we probably spend about seventy-five percent of our time. Probably maybe just being department heads and running our departments and taking care of the normal course of the business. And I look at all these things as extras. And I'll say personally for my departments, I don't have twenty-five percent of the time available to accomplish the items that would be on my list. I'd really like to see you take some consideration when you strike some of those things. I think also some things I'd make you aware of is that some of the items up there regarding facilities and homelessness, as you call it, fully aware are going to take and require. A fairly serious financial investment fairly soon, and if the investment's not made, we won't make June thirtieth the next year. So I guess I would, you know, I want to be aware of that, but.
Can you, can you make a suggestion, let's say item number three, would you strike?
I'd say resolving the ownership issue, three fifty gray is unlikely. Their architectural design, the property yet, countywide facility master plan certainly could be close to completion, it'll be defended on the speed. But you have to understand, like, the cost of that contract's going to cost three to five hundred dollars, the architect. And that'll come to you on, in September twenty-fifth. And that's why that would be a potential five.
What's the potential, you could be stricken at that point, right?
It could be, yeah, I guess it's a matter of either, there's always an ongoing list that can be evaluated and considered, but. The jail expansion project has been complete, but as you know, there are going to be some sizable chain orders coming before you're aboard in the next month. That's going to require general fund dollars.
Okay.
And I guess, you know, there's, unfortunately, this thing associated with facilities, homelessness will be considerable. The items related to the Sutter Point specific plan, certainly we're going to be able to hire consultants and. I guess a large portion of that will be reimbursed by the developers, but. I guess some of my challenges is that the priorities are very general and broad and not specific. And I think when they're not specific, it makes it very hard to deem whether or not you have completed the action.
So if we could just refer back to item number three again, can you tell me what could be more specific? Why don't we just make it more specific, just, yeah, and do it in eight fifty gray avenue and enjoy the expansion?
I can interject? Just for clarity, it's a good question.
Yeah, yeah.
Remember, we'll take Sutter Point. Because that item is here and talks about continuing to work, it doesn't mean we build all the homes out there, but we're looking at what are we going to do in this one-year timeframe to help move this project forward? So it's, we're going to complete what we're supposed to do over one year. And the same for these other projects, what we said to the facilities, we will complete a facilities master plan, we will get that done during the year. The ownership issue, we are working on that, are we going to purchase that property or are we going to stay with the lease? I'm very, fairly confident we'll resolve that in the next twelve months.
So, but Neil, does it feel the same confidence, so, so instead of resolving, I mean, maybe we can continue to work on the ownership process?
I guess it's a matter of, you know, the wording that you feel appropriate, because, I mean, if you're looking for a higher sense of completion by, say, June thirtieth of next year. I think it would be more helpful to have more finite words that, with more finite paths. The complete architectural design in eight fifty gray, yes. The, I mean, I guess realize that, that there are, there's about four opportunities to eight fifty gray as to what the final, you know, what the design looks like.
I know you're talking.
And those, we, so I think that would be, complete the jail expansion project. The other items, I guess I would say are, are some of the things that are going to happen anyway and in support. And a lot of these actions are tied to each other that they have had an impact on, in other parts of the project or other items on the list and you see. And that timing of all the things is somewhat critical, the.
So, I mean, I'm okay if you want to go down the list one by one, I'm, that's fine with me, so. If you want to start with item three again and say, so hire consultant, can we get that done in the next year?
Yes, hire consultant for the countywide facility master plan.
Okay, great, and then resolve ownership issues, we're saying that.
Just complete the architectural design in eight fifty gray.
Okay, are you guys doing, striking, resolving the ownership issues as a priority on this list? I'm sure the CEO will. Okay, we're kind of.
We're in, remember that anyhow, so, or work to resolve. No, just take it off, right, just complete architectural design.
Okay, then, complete architectural design, okay, good, and then complete jail expansion? That's great, okay, that's three, and then work with governments to develop a proposal to consolidate public safety dispatch?
I delete it.
Delete it?
Mine is my opinion.
It has a process to come out. And let me tell you why it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen because, you know, I would work with, with a former sheriff and he told me a long time ago, he says. They've tried to do it before and it hasn't worked. Everybody wants to, you have to understand that when you consolidate, you lose staff, okay? And so. Nobody wants to lose. Nobody wants to lose staff, plus the fact of that is, is that our, our system is not compatible with other counties or cities' systems. So they've got to go and change everybody's system so they're going to have one compatible.
Fair enough, well, sorry, I think the board's okay with striking that as a, as a major goal.
Nice.
Well, I didn't know if we can continue to go through these if you'd like, in a way that's what part of this meeting is for. Or for the sake of time, we can take this list to the E-team and come back with some recommendations as well, either way, I just thought.
Well, I think, I'd like to finish the line on, because it's short, it's not very long. And then this way we can leave, because I don't want anyone to go away, especially in this group, with the sense of like, these guys are nuts. Like, tell them we're going to have all this stuff we have to do, you know, and then wanting it a hundred percent done. And then come back and say, it's not going to happen. So, I mean, I'd rather, let's say, hey, let's, let's achieve the goals and then we meet some achievable.
Some set the bar too high, we were sixty percent right now.
We need to set the bar a little higher than normally.
I have a question to the chair, just because we put it on here as a goal, doesn't mean, some of these goals may be years, year, many years of objectives. It may not be one year, maybe we should be strive to work toward. Or something like that, if you put it on there, not, not to accomplish, like, eight fifty gray, you may not have that in three years.
Right.
That's why it's just the architectural design component.
But maybe, actually, if you decide you want to try to work at long-term ownership.
I think Scott addressed that early on, when I said, there's hundreds of priorities. We're just deciding right now, sort of, what direction we want to go for the next twelve months.
But if you don't set that as an objective goal, or are you ever going to get there?
We'll get there.
Well, it's there. The other message is going away, just because Neil did want to go down this list.
Well, we do it through the budget process, through the program descriptions and the CIP, we list all kinds of projects. Or these are your top ones that we're going to focus on. So let me read what I think I heard.
A temporary employee may be reading one.
See, they're actually ignoring you. Well, I, I just wanted to echo what Neil was saying, and I think one of the things that you might add to that facilities portion. Is establish a financial commitment to those specific projects, because we can work towards a project. And we come to you with a thirty million dollar project and you say, there is no way we can do that. So I think that we have to establish that financial commitment to those projects as part of that.
It's fine, yeah.
Facility slot.
And that will come with the facilities master plan.
Right.
That'll be articulated.
Okay, yeah, I think that's, you guys did with that.
How about I read what will be the revised facilities item number three?
Yeah.
Shorter. Complete countywide mass, excuse me, complete countywide facilities master plan. Complete architectural design of eight fifty gray avenue. Complete jail expansion project. That's it.
There you go. Okay, very good.
And I want to make sure that we get a hundred percent. We'll have no control on item number two. Let our G F O A, C S F M, well, countywide operating plans are a little bit, can't be as possible.
Well, the goal is to get it to, you know.
I know we want it to be awesome, but you know, if it's awesome and it doesn't win, we're not going to get a hundred percent.
I know, but what I would say this, from a management motivational standpoint, we, we need to have targets.
One, yeah.
What, just from a procedural standpoint, these were the five top priorities. Did the board agree and, and say, yes, we adopt these and we're giving you a direction and now we're going through? I'm not sure.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, got it.
That's what.
So you want to go through the process first and then make that.
Right, yeah. So what we have done so far, each of us wrote our own five priorities. And then, and then they were incorporated within this document. It looks like all of them are incorporated, but just under five categories instead, so.
Okay.
It's for, it's for the year coming up.
Okay.
So, I mean, it is good, even after this, that if you do take it back to the E team and there is further input or editing, then we're willing to look at that, staff proposal to adopt it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So anything on the homelessness side of it? Neil, I just want to, because I know a lot of this is following right under your purview, so.
I think the design location and configuration and mission services for the temporary shelter, I think is a great idea. And I think we can, should be able to get there, but I would think quite different.
Okay.
Well, it's going to happen all this year.
I would also tell you why we need to start happening. And I guess that's the thing, I think maybe my point is that, I think some things maybe there's not enough of a push to make happen. Is that I think if we get to where we like, respectfully, if we bring, you know, the best alternative to you.
Right.
Then I guess it's a matter of either this is the best alternative and this is our opportunity to meet the goal and the priority or then that, then that's it. But I think what I would tell you, that this takes staff a lot of time is that when we bring something forward, I'll say not only homeless, but a number of other issues. And then it's kind of like, well, let's go and retry something else and you'll kind of. I, I guess I'll, I'll say, you know, we need to have better dialogues going forward so that we bring to you the more we're looking for or one time. Because like I say, the, the time, one, one, the amount of time to bring something to you and then two, the time to re-group and then.
Only government will work that way. That'd be so amazing. Can you imagine what they say at the federal and state levels? But I think, you know, maybe we're going to have a discussion on our norms and possibly one of those things going forward. Because I, I kind of hear what you're saying, but a lot of it is, you know, a lot of transparency and discussion during the process. Rather than coming back at the end going, here's a document, by the way, it's going to cost you an extra two million because we've got for the air conditioner in the jails, right?
Right.
So, I mean, those kinds of surprises are like shocking to, to the board of supervisors. You have to like figure out, you know, eventually who's going to get cut and not from budgets. And it makes it really challenging. So to eliminate, to your point, you know, working to eliminate surprises through transparent discussions and possibly through the use of that finance executive committee, you know, format may be helpful. But I think, you know, I think to, to say, hey, we're going to end the politics of the situation, that would just be amazing. But, you know, I don't think that will ever occur. But we'll work towards it, right, and we can commit it. Very well, so, got it. Is there anything else on that, on that number five? Okay, what about number five?
No, I guess I would actually.
And anybody else?
I would actually throw in a comment about number one as far as improving our, employee morale. I thought maybe it might be more helpful to identify the employee morale. I mean, I, I would say personally, I think I have great morale in my department. You know, I mean, my, and, and I guess there's always some sense that not everyone is always going to be happy about their situation. So I guess it's whether it's a perceived notion that employee morale is not where it needs to be. But I think if we're going to take just, to do it correctly, if we spend some time just trying to identify where we think the morale is, you know, relative to either other agencies, other business sectors. This is a suggestion.
So was that one of yours or?
Uh, no, but Neil, perhaps you could have the district attorney's office and help them down there a little bit.
I can.
We did, we did.
Mr. Chair, we did have some department heads, because their employee morale is important.
Oh, that came from the department? Okay. Okay, we'll take it, but you know, I, those are always tough ones for me because I can't put a measurable, like, that's the measurable result. And so how do you know, you know, everyone says good morning and they're all happy, you know, it's like, but how do you really?
Can I say something on that note?
Yes.
This might seem counterintuitive because I think I am maybe the smallest department in the county, no, the public defender.
Employee morale. Talking to yourself.
No, the reason, I, I just wanted to say something about that because since I don't have finance staff, I don't have an administrator, I don't have an assistant, there's two of us that work full-time in the museum. And so for me, when I'm working with other departments often, I'm not only working with the other department heads, I'm working with people at all different levels. And I'm not going to mention any department or any employee by name, but I can tell you a lot of people I talk to, they see, well, like that employee brought up in the board of supervisors meeting the other day, they see renovations on buildings and they see D F I plans for department heads and they don't see anything happening at their level and it is very frustrating for them. They do hear you guys say often that employees are very important, that you want to do more for them, but they don't see it. So I just wanted to share that from my point of view.
Sure.
Because I think I do have a different insight than a lot of other department heads because of my lack of level in my own department. I get to meet a lot of other employees on all different levels.
Okay, so then it sounds like improved employee morale, we need to leave in there, but define better. And I would say again, that there's an opportunity to do that through leadership, through executive committee, through your meetings to say, hey, you know, here's, here's the perception, right? So, I mean, we don't, we can't, we understand perception until we realize what it is and we're told what it is, right? And so right now you just brought up something, I'm like thinking, well, I never even thought about that, right? So it's exactly how we have to, first we have to identify those issues. Then it goes through the C O's office to do, through this process where we can look at it and say, okay, we do want to leave it in here as a goal because it is an issue that's affecting you. And now we have to define how it's affecting you and then we got to say, okay, how can we get back to addressing the issue to make sure that that doesn't occur or that we minimize the occurrence of that, to the morale that stays high, right?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'll also say, as you as department heads and elected officials, you, you know your departments pretty well. You know, you know your, you know the employees very well. You know when they are having issues at home, you know, when they're having certain situations that, you know, we don't see, obviously, because, you know, we're not the, my managing voice, we are allowed you to manage your own department. And so, you know, in that regard, I think that morale in this county, in a certain parts, might be a little bit low. I wouldn't say that the district attorney's office is, is low. I would say that, you know, district attorney's office actually has pretty good morale. And in general, I think all departments have pretty good morale in this county. But like I said, there might be some, you know, other departments that we need to strengthen and keep the department.
Okay. That answered your question. Was it helpful to do that? We need to show love or love and appreciation. We get it. So we got, but it's all about how we understand what's going on.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, and as we do the employee succession plan and organizational, strategic plan work for H R purposes, that will touch on employee morale. I think that's a big component of that. Not going to be a more compassionate and successful agency.
Yeah, this is a really good feedback. Very helpful. So I, I think we kind of narrowed it down, Neil. Any other, any, any else for other departments?
I guess the only other, no, I like, is as far as budget and finance, is that certainly you have appointed department heads that are here, but some of are involved, elected department heads and they're not present. And a lot of this is going to be critical of them to perform their role in order to use on the goal.
That's a good point. Yeah, I think, I think, and to address part of that, part of the idea behind a budget finance committee to sort of bring people together to this, this, this continuous discussion, very, very good points. Thanks for your points. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
So we will come back, while we're not done with the whole thing, but we will come back to the board with recommendations, the priorities I suggested. Okay, so now I hand it over to Mr. Lopez.
Yeah, for sure.
Before we get on that thing, back on the, you know, your countywide goals, maintaining a strong commitment to public safety. As the president of the Southern County消防队 Association, we are going to be, it's a serious issues in the, in the upcoming budgets. And I'd like to see something, you know, publicly talked about as far as the long-term financing or, or funding for it. I mean, two of our three stations are staffed with long duty. Two-thirds of our first act of open is out of service currently. The one that's left is twenty-eight years old. Two of our four wildland engines are twenty-eight, four years old. We are going after a grant for staffing for the firefighter's position that after January first is going to be a dollar twelve in the middle age. We have some huge problems. I appreciate the statistic you're talking about, working on some funding to increase this, because salaries are not a training. I've lost over a third of my department from major departments. We're spending thousands of dollars training up, getting up to rights of probation, and they're gone. They're not only leaving for large salary increases, but they're leaving for staffing and brandy fire up. Trucks are older than some of the drivers that are driving them. And that's a, you know, I believe that our employees deserve better and I think our citizens demand it. So I'd like to see that be brought as a priority. Can we start thinking about that?
Through the chair, yes. So, tell me, when's the last time the fire service had a competitive assessment?
Division was passed, I mean, I believe nineteen ninety, second was passed in nineteen ninety-six. It's a flat tax with no.
So, so obviously since nineteen ninety-six, we have not had an increasing competitive assessment.
Correct.
So don't you think it, it loses us time, maybe go back out to the public and say, hey, you know, these men are going to, you know, come out and provide this excellent service for the county. It might be time for the county to get behind and have you do a competitive assessment. Obviously, I would talk to the chief Charlotte before we do anything, because I think you can actually involve it.
We have, we've had some great discussions. I think that our woes are sooner than that could, you know, be funded even if in a perfect world. I mean, for example, the fire truck that's sitting in Lido right now was purchased for around two-hundred forty thousand. That fire truck's getting replaced by the city of Lido this year at five-hundred forty-nine thousand. There's no budget change. So, yeah, things have went up and the dollar's the same.
Definitely hear you, definitely hear your concerns. Yeah, thanks, thanks for your. Yes.
It's going to take a little effort between all the departments to go back out. Because we're flat, there has not been a missed later on that particular task. So everything's gone up, trucks, gas, fuel, insurance. And I think by putting out a good campaign out there, I'm going to have problems.
We've lost three employees.
The lives going to have to be done. We're going to have to get somebody to do a study of what it costs now for your insurance and how much mayor's paying more because you don't have the employees, while we were having to staff it with three.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I couldn't agree more. We've got to raise that competitive assessment to help you out. Fire trucks, nineteen ninety, brought, brought in fifty-two hundred dollars out of the town. And, you know, and employee, we didn't say that, everything gone up, but that's the tax, can't involve that.
The whole call for services changed in my career immensely. We've never had, nor less, less staffing. So, yeah, so I mean, we have to do something.
And more medical aid calls now than you had in the.
Even more non-emergency calls, not even ones that are actually life threatening, it's just tall, socially they're demanding our services. And I think that's not just, you know, our share, but I think that's across the board for every department.
Every department.
I think that's just the things have changed. So, yes, I mean, it's, we've, we've kind of reached out, we've been doing the best we can for a long, long time. I mean, I commend our previous chiefs, our, 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 our words, but you know, we've kind of reached out. Now we're getting more.
I also think that if you would allow the public to know what they could save on their church by getting it aerated, I think they would be more than fun.
Correct, yeah, because our I S O ratings have, have went from, some of the departments have lost members, that increases their transport, yes.
Thanks for your input. Any further discussion on that?
Okay.
Well, just the issue of how you fund the fire department will be covered through the time she's.
We do, committee as well.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So now we'll turn it over to Mr. Lopez to talk about the board norms.
Well, first off, I want to acknowledge, they decided last year for the board of supervisors to decide that they wanted a, not only a set of norms, but we had discussion and, you know, beginning to talk about how you were going to operate with these norms. Can you see a mark?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the key piece though is to recognize that what norms do, obviously in a very potential contentious political environment, is they offer a way to set the tone. And that's important from a leadership perspective, when you think about how can you set the tone? And hopefully that continues to build not only within the county, but outside. And so what I'd like to do in looking at these is first ask you, how do you think you did? I don't want to say it's a report card, but how, it is a report. So if you were to give yourself a grade, thank you, Jeff, that was a good idea. How, how do you, what grade would you give yourselves in terms of following these five norms during the course of the year?
As a group, word of it.
That's a moment of truth right there. That's a moment of truth. But let's start off collectively.
Go ahead.
I think we can agree on all five of them. I didn't think we'd done terrible.
I think we've done better. I've seen worse before.
That bad, Larry?
No, I've seen, I've seen supervisors that didn't even want to talk to you because the fact is that you talked about something in your district. You're in the middle of your district and you haven't found out what you're doing. But I'd say we've done a good, good, dear, deep part.
There's always rooms in Pinewood. Okay.
I, I think, for the most part, looking at each of those, we adhere to most of it. And I think this has been a really great board to work with. They have provided a lot of, the board brings a nice support here. Just like Larry said, there are boards where people don't talk to each other at all, right?
Right.
And everybody on this board is willing to speak and speak their mind, you know. Which I think is really important from a board perspective. I think the thing for us to always consider is when we make these commitments that really make an effort to stick to them, like, you know, I haven't visited this for, I don't know how many months, right? So we should continually sort of look at what norms we decided on. And then maybe even, I don't know if this becomes a norm, but hold each other more accountable to those norms. You know, this will make it, instead of like joking about it and saying, oh, you were stating negatively about something. They say, okay, we did have a law we agreed upon, so if you mind refraining from number three. I think that would be helpful, but I think also it's important for us to have norms because we as leaders, we have to work in an established fashion that people can recognize that, we can see that and we can share that with others and they can, leading by example, that way I can show them it's not. But I think most of all, adhering to a lot of those.
In, in talking with each of you, I asked the question and I heard from, from you all that you felt pretty good about the norms and thought that you related to each other following the norms, whether you used them or didn't. whether you used them or pulled them out, but in terms of being respectful, that you felt like it helped the group function more effectively. And, and so I didn't hear any negatives from each of you about any violation of the norms. So I, I just thought I'd ask you, but I heard individually pretty good comments. So the question then is, as you look at these norms, do you want to keep them going into the next year? Do you want to remove any or do you want to add any? So first, do you want to keep norms, these norms as you go on to the next year?
I'd say yes, I mean, they seem to be working, so, you know? Like I said, it's good you go back and make sure we're involved and if we're not, at least say, hey, we go around here and making sure they're respectful and that we're professional.
I think we should keep them, just give the framework, like, I mean, in my position, that down the road you can stay with them all and make, you know, see this as the way we operate. And, you know, down on your own, which you do walk away from each other. You do have this agreement, but you still can go on and maybe have a drink.
So I'm hearing for the most part that the group wants to continue the norms.
Yeah.
Okay.
I get wrong.
Do you want to take any one of these off or you're happy with all five? Do you want to add any norms to this, any new norm? So is there anything missing that you think about?
Sorry, the audience.
Yeah, I was going to say, is anybody out there?
Give us a signal action.
There's staff.
We're, we're.
Oh, do you want to add a norm for them?
I think two, two and three almost tie together. They're kind of, you blast it.
They're similar.
Right, yeah.
Well, actually, I would take out maybe staff because it does cover that. But the body is, and it doesn't happen here, but I've seen it happen in other places where I work. It can get ugly during a campaign season. So that's why it's really critical that you're paying attention to how you want to operate during campaigns. You haven't done it, but I've been in places where it's really ugly and it has a negative impact on you, on, on the body for a long period of time. So we could probably adapt that language, but I think that's a good one for, for the group. Do you have other ideas? Okay. So then going forward, we'll make an adjustment for editorial to three and then we'll keep those five and those will be the norms going forward. Okay? Anything else?
Just, well, you know, thinking about, thinking about over the past couple of years. Are you, are you, you know, we make kind of this sort of being positive in public towards, not that we have to cater to each other, but be positive instead of being overly critical or snide, I guess, remarks and things like that. I don't know how to do that.
How about leveling form?
I guess it goes under professionalism, I don't know.
Yeah.
Fits under that.
What does comments, what does that mean?
Yeah.
What's that? You don't make comments better, no? Is that whatever?
It is a secret.
You guys just made the mistake.
Yeah.
I think they're fine, but that's just my.
Yeah.
Yes? Okay.
I'm male.
It has a.
Well.
That was.
That was smooth.
Yeah. All right, then I'll turn it over back to Scott. I appreciate that you, you asked the staff to put one on the table. That was pretty good.
So I want to put, were there revisions, revisions to number three or not? Yeah.
I, I think there was some question about redundancy between two and three.
Right.
But if in three, we just take out staff, because they'll do that in number two, it, it holds steady in terms of how they relate to one another.
Okay, one's in public and.
Yeah.
So the word staff is removed?
Yes. As I understand it, is that correct?
You could want to bury that right there.
You can beat up on us in public and that's fair.
I guess, I mean, yeah. I mean, but speaking negatively, yeah. It could go either way, really.
What's, these are your norms. You want to keep it, revise it?
Either, keep it.
Keep it?
Okay.
All right, well, we appreciate that you're going to stay with us.
Okay.
Okay. So we're, um, ended it.
Good.
Well, there's a next step, so we're at the end here. So our next step is we will come back to the board's scheduled meeting where we bring back the goals, the priorities, the norms or, you know, or reaffirming, reaffirm them. We will spend some time working on the mission statement and custom sort of explosive tied into the vision. Can you believe this headline, vision?
Core values.
Core values. So we'll work on that. That'll take a little more time for that, but we'll come back in short order in the next meeting or two. Well, next meeting tomorrow, so not that long, but we'll come back with the other items. So with that, you are done with adjournment, unless the board has any further.
Yes, through the chair.
Yes, sir.
So today was a good, uh, good meeting. I just want to let you know, leadership is not about a title. Our CEO, board supervisors, department heads, we're all in this together. And so it's not that the board is, this is what the board is going, this is what the board wants. Hopefully it's a buy-in from all of you. And hopefully if you get other buy-ins from other elected officials as well. We have one left, you know, John has stayed here, Nate was here. And so, but it's important that we get a buy-in from everybody. That E team is really important to the board. It's really important because we got, we, as our CEO will give us the input of what the E team sent. Okay? So just want to let you know that from this board member's perspective, that's our CEO. He's not going anywhere. That's our county council, she's not going anywhere, other than Megan. Everyone's staying here. Everyone's staying here. So we're all in this together and let's move, you know, Sutter County in the right direction together, all right? Working peacefully as a one unit, okay? Let's pull the rope together.
Any other comments? Okay, I just wanted to wrap it up by saying that we, again, that we appreciate the work that you do. Appreciate the organization today of putting this together. I think this is a great exercise for the board to be a part of and along with all the other employees who are here. Look forward to continuing to work with all of you except for me, but move forward.
Well, we got her, she's not paying his phone number.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, thank you guys, have a great one.
Exactly.